December, Monday, December 16th. Don Nunez.
Good evening.
And Ken Boulet. Welcome, gentlemen. Sorry about the delay.
No problem. So, tonight, I'm just going to give you a quick overview of the timeline that it's going to take if the council entertains and has the appetite for Rhodes 2020 referendum for November ballot. There's many steps along the way, and I guess the main take-home point is that it's going to have to be, we're going to have to start pretty soon in January, based upon 2015 Rhodes timeline and also 2010. So, the first initial thing is really to meet with subcommittee and kind of discuss what we have for issues, what we have for roads, and kind of start developing, just to open up that discussion. The next few things we're going to be working on is revising the draft management reports and develop funding scenarios. Meet with Chris sometime in April and finalize the management report also in April. Then, with the main real goal of finalizing all the funding scenarios, what, again, what the direction of the council would want to be sometime in early May. Then, after that, we can take it back to subcommittee meeting to, again, confirm all these recommendations, confirm the direction that we're going. After that meeting, we met with, we had a special council meeting to present it to the council and to the public about what came out of subcommittee and where we're going, and if there's any alterations, we would take it up in June 20, like, in June 22nd or so, to take what we learned from the May meeting, and if there's any recommendations from the special, from the council meeting and public hearings and the like, we would adjust that for the June meeting, then hold the final Rhodes public hearing and town council presentation sometime in August, first week of August. Now, the big thing is that for this to happen, we would have to have the last, the last day to get on in November ballot would be September 3rd. They would have to go, the council would have to approve this by September 3rd. And the last day to notify the Secretary of State to be on, for that question, would be on September 18th for November ballot. So, there's a lot of steps along the way, and I do have handouts for you afterwards. You can take a better look at it. But, again, with the main goal of this is that we're going to have to start soon, and we'll start in subcommittee, and we'll keep going, and we'll keep everybody informed. But, that's where the main thing is going to start, and we should be starting sometime in January.
We want to be proactive, mayor and councilors, because, you know, it seems like you have all the time in the world, and you really don't. And we'll be having some goal settings coming up in January, so we can discuss it, but look at the timeline, and then we can develop any further information, the more substantive part of the issues, if you have any questions. But, we just wanted to start the process.
Any questions for anyone? Just quick, Donald. So, I know you did an initial back in September, kind of an initial road kind of look on what may be on the referendum. So, within that timeline, I, again, once the subcommittee meets, is there going to be a public hearing who say, "This is what we're thinking in the winter, so people can take a look at it, just in case their road may be on there, it may not be on there," instead of waiting all the way to August? Just a suggestion?
Well, that's where, again, that's where it starts, again, is in January with, again, with the subcommittee meeting. Then, we'll develop the scenarios with all that intact. And sometime in probably May, late April and May, we'll have the final funding scenarios and what the streets are to take it to that first special council meeting, just to talk about the roads and what's on it. That's when the streets will be announced, after we work through all the councilor's requests and what we've have for backlog, for complaints. We have, you know, the quote-unquote complaint list.
Right.
We'll take all that into consideration, and we'll have that presented for the, in May. And that'll be the first meeting in May. Then, we'll take it on from there.
Okay.
And make revisions and additions after that.
Any other questions? I'm sorry, Deputy Mayor Susak.
Is this another five-year referendum? Are we anticipating that?
No. I think it's going to be more of a three to a four.
A three to a four?
Yeah. Because I believe that the funding amount's going to be lower, so we're not going to spread it out over that five years. The first, although the first year is kind of almost lost, because if we get, if it does pass, let's say it does go in November 2020, usually funding isn't available till February of '21, and by the time we hit this, get things engineered and surveyed, we might be able to get a couple of streets that are either small or more mill and pave. We can be able to get those done right away, but the heavier reconstruction streets, those take five to eight months, depending on environmental things, to get designed. So, we may not be, have shovel-ready projects for that 2021, except for mill and pave and other kind of smaller pavement preservation techniques.
Yeah. Because I know we get a lot of bang for our buck for, you know, keeping our roads, you know, get the 70s up to 90s and stuff, but I will tell you, as I walked this fall, I got a lot of streets in District 3 that haven't been touched in 60 years.
Yep.
And, you know, it may not be a lot of bang for our buck, but it's time we spent our bucks on some of these streets, so.
And that's what the meetings, again, that's what all the subcommittees and we'll be meeting.
So, that's the question. If you guys are meeting, so, who, so if someone, so say you're meeting, and you're putting together a basic plan, and someone wants to know, I mean, do they funnel through us to you guys, say, "Hey, can you consider this road?" You know what I mean? I mean?
It'd be easier to do that, because right now, we've been taking complaint, again, that complaint list was either through council says, you know, "We got some complaints about this road," so we kept the running list, or we would get, we in engineering or DPW would get formal complaints from residents saying, "Can you please put this on your," so that's where our starting point is, kind of, right now. Then, we can kind of go there. We know Summers Road, we know Broadleaf, you know, those things like that.
Yeah. I don't think there would be any lack of public awareness and ability to do the input. This is just the basic schedule. We'll get up all the roads that are intended, we'll put the complaint list up, and we'll let everybody from my website to Public Works to every council meeting.
Perfect.
We'll say, "Look, if you have a road, you're interested, this is where you can go and look."
That was my only question.
Now, we'll make sure there's abundant and ample opportunity for public input.
Perfect. Thank you. Anyone else?
Okay. Now, we're going to slide right into a very, um, snow and ice control plan, and with me here is Ken Boulet.
This is, just so that you know, this is backed by popular demand. They did an excellent presentation last year, and I'm not joking, a lot of people have asked, "Could we get an update?" Just to remind, because as we like to say, this is perishable. You've got new people, memories fade, so being in the snow.
It should be an annual thing, I agree.
Yeah. And, of course, being on the eve of another snow, ice, sleet event, it's very appropriate that we scheduled it, and without further ado, I give you our own.
Ken's email and phone number isn't on his first page. I'll try to keep my personal information off it. Ken Boulet, I'm the Highway Crew Leader. Been working for the town for quite a few years. This is a shorter version of the snow and ice control plan. The main plan's about 44 pages, so I'll try to make this quick.
And I'll just say, that's currently on the manager's website, theirs, and we'll put this up tomorrow for the abbreviated.
Yep. You can, yep. You can, like I said, find it right on the webpage, under Public Works and under Highway, bottom of the page. Down there. Oh, wrong way. All right. Stop the Snow Plan. Just wanted to pick out a few things here. There's a lot, a lot of stuff in the plan itself, but start with forecasting. Forecasting, we have our own weather service that we look at. It goes out 15 days. We can ask it questions. You know, what do we expect in Enfield? They actually have a meteorologist at, you know, anybody that's on it. We also look at all the TV stations. We get together with Donald and other division managers to try to come up with the plan, because we're kind of at the mercy of the weathermen, which is kind of scary at times, as you guys well know. But, we're looking at everything. We're looking at where we're located, being in the valley here. A lot of times, you know, if it's been cold, the cold gets locked in here. If it's been warm, you know, it changes the whole outlook of the storm. But, we're looking at a lot of different avenues, and, you know, years of experience, it does help. So, a few things here, I'll just bypass it on quickly. The sidewalk snow removal, couple things with that. There's always questions why the sidewalk clock doesn't start right away. A lot of it has to do with buildings and grounds is really tasked with a lot of work. They help us with the roads. They also doing all the town buildings, school parking lots and everything, and it's quite an undertaking.
Ken, because your tweet was per, can you just explain when it starts, so why it, so if it snows tonight, and just so you guys are out doing your thing, you're not done until Wednesday, right? Just explain when it starts, why.
Well, when it starts is when we know that there'll be enough time to clear the town walks within 24 hours.
Exactly. So, we don't, we're not penalizing anyone if the town doesn't clean its sidewalks first?
Correct. Yes. Yep. Because it would not be, look very good.
Very good. No, I just, I think people know that, because I think it's actually great that we're doing our.
Right. Because we get our own house in order, and we don't think, it would be hypocritical for us to start to criticize others when we, even though you may only have one small area and we have a lot more area, we think it's equitable that when we are done, that we then start the clock, however long that may be. The last storm was probably how long, Ken? Maybe about?
It was quite a bit after, but there was so much snow to remove.
So, much snow, so it was a couple of days.
Well, I'm not talking last week, I'm talking the first one. It was, it was a couple of days, because there was so much snow to remove.
But, we put it out there, and you know that once it starts, we're done, and you have 24 hours.
Yep. Parking ban, I'll talk about a little bit. And a second, um, snow event notification log, that's, you know, something we talk about, so we can get all the information out, but I will address that in a minute. How residents can help. Main thing, the residents, parking ban's a big thing, if they can get their vehicles off the street. Basketball hoops, I cannot tell you how many basketball hoops are out there on the streets. And Mike, you know I love basketball, but it does cause issues.
My hoop is not on the street for the record.
Yeah.
But, you know, perhaps because Donald had told me this, and, you know, we all, we support it, we like it. I know when I was town attorney, we had to talk about it. But, Donald, in one district, one plow driver, how many basketball hoops in one area alone?
There was 80. In your neighborhood, around your neighborhood, Mr. Mayor.
So, multiply that, and it's just, you know, that causes a real.
It's District 3, by the way.
And what difficulties does that pose, Ken, so people understand why we're doing it?
It does, well, the trucks have to swing around. The drivers out there, they don't want to damage any, one of the contractors damaged one, got caught on the doorbell camera last year, and it was just, they overhang the road. The trucks are tall, you know, got high headboards, mirrors, could do damage to their trucks and other things, so. And we're not able to get the snow back to get the catch spaces clean, you know, if we have some flooding, like we did after the last storm.
So, we ask everybody to cooperate with us. We don't want to go to enforcement, we want to go to education. So, please, this is the reason, and, you know, to help your neighbors and people on your own street for the safety of the drivers. I mean, sometimes they're up a long period of time plowing, and there's fatigue factors as at night. It's difficult, you know, to be able to see those, so please be considerate, try to remove them, and then bring them back, you know, in the spring, or at least if you're going to use them, you're not supposed to be in the street, but at least do it in a responsible manner. We'd appreciate it.
All right. Next thing I'll just touch on quickly, we're going to be going to another slide with the roads not maintained by the town of Enfield, which are state roads. Plow trucks with raised plows, we have another slide, and mailbox replacement policy, there's another slide coming up. And there's a lot of stuff in this control plan. I know Donald, the town manager and other folks, put a lot of time into this, because I think our last plan was about four pages. But, so, we'll go to the next slide and down. All right. Parking ban, blue lights here, and there's actually cameras on these lights. They, they do help with getting a kind of a gist of what's going on out there with, you know, we have a bunch of them on state roads, but I can't get my cursor working here. There we go. All right. We have one on Belmont and Route 5, Elm and Route 5. There is also signs out there with the blue lights, other than two locations, High and Route 5, South Street, Pearl, Franklin and Pearl. We have newest ones are Exit 48 North, where's my cursor, Freshwater and Elm Street. We have quite a few down in the Green Valley area. We have one on Green Valley, halfway down, Green Valley and Pearl, Laurel Nutmeg and the Laurel and Laurel and Park. Parking ban notification. We do take great pride in trying to get the word out here. We put it out on a couple TV stations, radio. We have the notify me that people can sign up for, the town website, a DPW tweet. We have an info line, we try to change for every storm, which we normally do, town Facebook, ETV. We actually just put the parking slide up there tonight, because we're having one tomorrow at 7:00 for the residents. We also use this to notify for the sidewalk clock start, you know, town website, DPW tweet, notify me, info line, town Facebook. December 2nd storm. You know, we put a lot out there. We have, we usually try to get three extra duty officers to work with us to get cars moved. A lot of the beat officers will help us out, too, but just the December 2nd storm, they moved 191 cars for us. Towed 15, ticketed 18. The job that they're out there for is really to get cars moved. We're not looking to tow anybody's car or ticket anybody's car. And a lot of this focuses in Thompsonville. We have a lot of challenges in Thompsonville with the narrow streets, no place to put snow. It's a daunting task, and with the police help, it really helps us out clearing the streets and making them passable for emergency vehicles, people, and our town trucks. All right. These are authorized parking lots, so people from Thompsonville can try to get their cars off the street. We do Whitworth Street, you can see them there, Angelo, La Mania, South River, Bolt Lounge, Asnuttuck and Pearl and South Street. It does get tight, because there's not a whole lot out there, but we do offer something to assist the public. Private driveway policy. No, we do not plow private driveways and entrances here. As this graph shows, snow should be plowed or shoveled to the right side of the driveway as you are facing the road. This helps eliminate snow piles at the driveway entrance. Whenever possible, do not push snow out onto the road anytime. We have a lot of issues with snow blowers. At times, it's easier to not turn your chute and blow it out in the road. One of the big things is people with pickups plowing driveways, they tend to push the snow across the street, creating windrows. And the biggest thing is, if they don't get it all the way across the street, and most don't, it creates an ice dam that could damage the plow, hurt the guys. It's definitely a major issue. All right. We're going to the roads not maintained by the DPW. We don't plow, we don't fix potholes and anything. They're right here, it's Barbrick Road, Elm Street from Route 5 to Walgreens, Enfield Street, Franklin and Frew Street. Everybody thinks they're town roads. If you didn't work for the town, you probably would think so, too, because they're not really major roads. Hazard Avenue, North Maple Street, Shaker Road and Taylor Road from Shaker Road to the Long, East Long Metal Line and Depot Hill Road. Plow trucks with raised plows. A truck with a raised plow does not always mean the driver has completed that area. A plow truck can be driving with the plow up for many reasons. They may be returning for fuel or fuel service, returning for salt. It is quicker to get back to the assigned areas. Responding to calls to assist emergency services. A lot of times during a snowstorm, we're getting calls, a police officer maybe trying to get somewhere. Ambulance is a lot. The drivers will, will find out what route the driver's on closest to that area and dispatch them from the road. If they're in the middle of a road plowing, there's an emergency comes up, we drop everything and get there. Always try to get the closest plow there. So, we do have assigned routes, and we do also have the GPS where we can track our vehicles. Mailbox policy. This is a new one. It's, you know, it's a tough one. The only way we replace mailboxes is if it's a direct hit from the plow or the truck. It's not the slush coming off the plow. We, you know, encourage our drivers and advise them, if they do hit a mailbox by accident with the, with the plow or back in, to report it. That major storm, I think we had three of them that were actually hit by the driver, the driver in the truck, so.
And that's over the span of three days?
Right. Yep. So, that was pretty good.
You guys are very responsive to the ones we saw, so.
Yeah. And, like I said, if a resident complains or puts a, you know, complaint in, we'll go out, we'll inspect, determine if it was struck by the plow. It's pretty easy to tell if a mailbox has been struck by the plow. I think one of the main reasons this mailbox policy went in, over the years, we've replaced a lot of rotten posts. Wood doesn't stay in the ground for a long time. This is just a graph through the U.S. Postal Service, shows the proper height for a mailbox, the proper distance from the road, and to, you know, at least bury them by, you know, two feet, 24 inches. We also do not replace expensive decorative and specialty mailboxes, are not required, and therefore, the financial responsibility will not be borne by the town of Enfield. We've had some expensive mailboxes that we've replaced, you know, in the past, so, you know, it's tough telling people no, but it's, you know, it's getting to be an issue. All right. There's the graph. Our snow removal operations, we don't always put it into effect, it determines on the amount of snow we had. After our big storm, we, by the time we got to downtown, it was a couple of days later, so I think we went from Sunday to Tuesday. On Thursday morning, we started removing snow around churches, some of the tougher streets downtown. We did all the snow removal with our own equipment. We removed 170 loads of stone, you know, so that's our equipment, basically five or six trucks. And the more snow you get, the quicker the trucks fill up, so we did a pretty good job. And then, we had the rain and everything else come in over that weekend, so we didn't continue it. And I guess that's the end of my show, but I gladly answer any questions and comments and come off too nervous. Did great, Ken. Any questions? Councilman Bosco.
What is the parking lot policy? Because I know in our subcommittee, we were supposed to do a parking lot policy, so after the snow was done, you had to get your cars out of the parking lot, so they could plow them and clean it up, and I haven't heard anything about that.
I refer that to Donald.
We have not developed an official policy yet. We just kind of have to keep patrolling, and once a car moves, you've got to try to get in there and hit it and move it. And again, and like Ken said, it does get tight real quick, and as people are vying for those spots and they don't want to move. And sometimes, like the one on, no, on Pearl, not Pearl.
Whitworth.
Right next to the Polish, right. We own half that, we own half of it, and the other business owns the other half, so sometimes people get confused that we didn't plow that, but we actually, we only do half of it on that, on that particular parking lot. But, for official policy, we have not adopted one yet or developed one yet.
Well, we need to.
Yes.
Councilor Sosa.
Great presentation, and one of the things I think's important for the community to understand is, and I'm sure it's this way today in the police department, when the snow's falling, there's a snow ban, citizens would call up and say, "You need to go tow this car." The officers don't have that type of personnel to just go all over the town, so the way we used to work it, we'd rely on you to say, "Hey, we're going down to Windsor Street in 20 minutes." The cops would go ahead of you and try to clear it. You're still working that way, pretty much?
We try to get the officers started right away, before the snow actually hits, because it makes it a lot easier for everyone, you know, tow truck drivers and all. So, the biggest thing is they try to go through the areas and get as many cars moved as possible, because as I said, the last thing they want to do is tow or ticket anybody's car. Like I said, we normally focus on, normally we bring in three to four officers. Three officer would be, one would work High Street North up to the state line, one would work High Street South down to Green Valley area, other one would start like in John Street section and work north.
And these are extra job officers, right?
Extra, yeah. And the patrol officers, the district officers, they'll, they'll help us out when they can, but a lot of times in snowstorms, they're busy, you know.
Right. And the other thing is, to try to prevent accidents with our personnel, at the police department, when I was there, the gas pumps, they freeze up, and we had officers slipping all the time there. They looked at some type of overhang or something, so the officers could fuel without having to slip and slide. And then, we had the same thing at the administrative entrance to the department. The gutters never held the water, so it'd be like a skating pond. And not only have we had officers with severe injuries, we've had your own staff with femur injuries. Are we addressing that this year at all?
Yeah. The gutters were replaced. There was the wrong size gutters for that, so that's, that situation's been rectified.
Okay.
The tanks at the EPD are going to be due for replacement in 2021, calendar year 21, so any improvements now are just going to, I don't know if we're going to be entertaining that, but that tank is going to have to be replaced, and we're going to go in above-ground gas tank at that point for EPD.
Okay.
So, it's mandated.
All right. Thank you. Councilor Enger and Deputy Mayor Susak.
Hi. Thank you for the presentation. On your video, you show the trucks being filled up with the snow. Where does that truck go, and where do you dump them?
We tend to use Brainer Park out back, because it's a quick turnaround. We can get our trucks, because we're using smaller ones. You know, past years, we've used rental 10-wheelers in bigger trucks. We do have one 10-wheeler ourselves, but, so we try to get a quick turnaround, because they can get to Brainer Park, you know, dump quick and get back, so. We've also used a transfer station in the past, but for downtown snow removal, Brainer Park seems to work well for us. Deputy Mayor Susak.
Can you give us some guidance on how we should put our trash out? Because I noticed that a lot of times, the plow has to go around the trashcans. Happened to be, I think it was for the, one of the storms, the first, and I'm on South Road, and I'm watching, and the plow's coming down, he's got to go around every single trashcan. And it's like really hard for us to try to do the right thing, so a little guidance would help.
If trash is delayed, we would, you know, hope that the residents would bring their barrel back in, because that really makes our life a lot easier. Trash guys, nobody's trying to knock cans over, because our guys are picking them up. So, if residents know their trash is delayed today, to try to bring it up or get it, you know, get it up 10 feet away from the road, so it would definitely make life easier for everyone.
Put it in your driveway.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Mayor.
Councilor Moore? Oops, sorry.
Coach Ken, thank you. Thanks for your crew and all they do. I'm on the click, see click fix, and I see all the complaints come in after. My cul-de-sac isn't done right, or the sidewalk isn't done, or it's mounted on the sidewalk. Can you take care of all those?
Thank you.
Thanks. How many of those do you get per storm, roughly?
Oh, I don't know. I'd say maybe about 20. Yeah. The thing is, and I told Donald this, and he understands snow removal, you know, the first storm of the year is always a bad one, but when we get a first storm of the year, and we almost get 18 inches of snow, we get beat up pretty good. Anyone else?
Mr. Mayor, Councilor Susak had asked for where we are budget-wise with our snow accounts, so I'll just quickly, Donald was kind enough to provide. Highway budget is $150,000, budgeted $107,000, remaining at 71%. Magnesium chloride is budgeted at $17,152. We have 93% left, or about $16,000 plus. Contractors in the budget for outside help is $92,000. We have $66,000 or 73% remaining, and untreated salt is a large, large number, $224,295 remaining is 194,960 or 87%. So, we'll see what tomorrow brings, and we'll report at the next meeting.
And it's just December.
Yes. Anyone else? I also want to thank you guys, too, for picking up the brown barrels the week after the storm, which I know is a nice little touch, by the way. I mean, I know it's technically, once it snows, we don't do it, but I know a lot of people had their barrels out, so I appreciate it. And well done to the storm, so I guess you guys are old hat now, right? Thank you both. Appreciate your patience as well. Sorry we're late.
Thank you.
Thank you both.
Thank you both. So I know we're late, so we're just going to hop right into the regular meeting. Or Donald, you got more? Sorry?
I think Chief.
Oh, Chief, sorry. We have more, sorry, Chief.
Yeah, exactly. Again, while they're situating, we thought appropriate this time of year as well is to talk about the town notification system and give an update for our residents. We've also, most recently, I solicited from those who use it from board, public works and police, any suggested changes. The chief is going to address the suggestion that he has, but we have before Steve Hall, who's the Director of Emergency Management, the chief of police, they'll give you an update on notification systems, and then you'd be free to ask her, ask any questions.
Welcome.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you for the opportunity to join you once again. My pleasure to do so. With me is Steve Hall, the town's Emergency Management Director. For all things emergency management, he is my go-to guy, he is your go-to guy. We thought it would be worthwhile, and we're happy to provide you with an overview of how emergency notifications, particularly the Everbridge system works, its history, how we operate it, when we operate it, the limitations of it, and what it's intended to reach. After Mr. Hall has done with that brief overview, I have some suggestions for its improvement. I can go light, I can go detailed as you see fit, but we do see that there may be some misunderstanding in terms of the system that may occasionally be causing some consternation for folks. We have some suggestions to improve that. When he's done, he'll lateral that ball back to me.
Great. Welcome, Steve.
Good evening, folks. Good evening. In the interest of time, I could, I could spend a few moments here waxing eloquently about the history of the Everbridge system. It is, as we see now, old technology, but it is still very vital, and it's very well-received, and it works wonderfully. For the most part of the time, it is basically limited to people signing up. Our road closures that we do through the police department for serious accidents, road closures, and other things that generally require public notification, there are signup locations on the PD page, on the emergency management page, on the town manager's page, and I think maybe even DPWs as well. If people are seeking to be notified, they can sign up for the Everbridge system. If someone signs up, they can utilize their email, their cellphone, their home phone, their work emails. Almost any way that you can be, consider being contacted can go through the Everbridge system. It is, once again, though, providing that the individual resident signs up. There are numerous public service campaigns out there from the state to sign up for CT Alert. It is piggybacked into, it's both, both our system and CT Alert is Everbridge-driven. Again, the history for the program comes from the state of Connecticut, I believe probably 2006. It was implemented by the state. We picked up on it just before Albert, and it was used to great success during that storm. Yeah. We, the amount of notifications that we sent out through that system and that 10-day period that we were all out of power, I don't know that I can count that high, to tell you the truth. It was several times per day. So we've used it ever since then, and we've kind of fine-tuned it into the point where the police department is using the Everbridge system mostly for those things like road closures and emergency situations. Now, the emergency situations are a bit different, because if we send out an emergency notification, it will touch the white pages, the yellow pages, and anyone who is signed up. But again, those folks who only have a cellphone may not be touched by it if we just use the Everbridge system itself. It may require us to go out and hit the folks that are signed up as well, which we do on a regular basis. If there's an emergent system, situation, we will draw a geographical area around that situation that needs to be notified. The one that comes to mind is when they found the hand grenade in the garage that was downtown Thompsonville. We pulled a half-mile radius. Now, we know this because the damage radius of a World War II airhand grenade is approximately 150 to 200 yards. So we went a half a mile or three-quarters of a mile out from that point, that address, so that anyone in that area would be notified to stay put, yet it wouldn't send any kind of alarm or panic through the entire town. So those, the available options on the system can be as pinpoint as a half, three-quarter mile radius around a problem, or we can reach out through the emergency portion of the program and touch anything that's wired to, you know, AT&amp;T Frontier. If it's on a line, we'll get it. And anyone who signs up, if they sign up, they will get it. And it's, like I said, it's been pretty successful going forward. Folks that don't sign up, folks that don't have a landline, they're going to be, you know, we have other methods for contacting them. We are highly active on social media. We, you know, we have been at certain times, such as the snow toes, officers driving down the street on the PA, making announcements. We have sent officers door-to-door in situations to make sure that the folks that are impacted are notified. So it is not just a single phase, it's a multifaceted approach to make sure that everyone in town is notified if they're going to be affected. In the interest of time, I'll cut it there if you folks have any questions.
Any questions for Steve?
Just a comment, Steve. I'm glad you brought up that situation with the hand grenade down here, because there was no need to notify people on the eastern side of town. So they may interpret that as, hey, I found out this situation, I wasn't notified. You weren't notified because you weren't even close to. So it doesn't mean the system's not working. And we've done it, too, for people with guns in homes, we could shelter in place. So people shouldn't think they're going to be notified on every single event if they're impacted by it. It doesn't mean the system's not working.
And more importantly, the one, the one situation that we referred to with the hand grenade, there was a genuine concern that if we had put out a notice that, hey, we found a hand grenade down in Thompsonville, that people would actually come.
Right.
Because when something like that happens, you're going to have the bomb squad, you're going to have, you know, you're going to have, you know, a tremendous amount of assets, you know, reporting to a certain address. And, you know, to be perfectly honest, I've been in this business for a very long time, and it's still pretty cool. So yeah, people who like to see things like that and all of the activity, they may actually just turn up if they get notified on the other side of town, and that puts people in danger that ought not to be.
I'd also share, if I could, that there is a, there's, on the converse side, there's also a concern about the numbing effect that comes with the over-notification. It's why silver alerts were invented after amber alerts, because if we pulled the amber alert trigger too frequently, folks, the reaction was, oh, well, here we go again. So there's a need to notify, also to not notify as well, so as to not create what we refer to as the numbing effect.
Deputy Mayor Susak. Anyone else?
Yeah. Last Wednesday, we had the meeting for the prison committee, and a question came up as to, if there's a prison escape, how is that integrated into our Everbridge system? And since we have prisons in Summers, how is Summers Alert Enfield, and how does the state, and how do all these things integrate so that something that is something that is really of paramount importance to the whole town gets disseminated?
So I'm going to be careful, because I frankly only feel comfortable speaking as to Enfield, but I would tell you as to that specific...
Yeah, that was kind of the problem we had at the, at the meeting, and I'm hoping that a little further research would come from this, but at least you can explain the Enfield end of it, and maybe we look to how this is integrated, because I, I'm hoping that it is.
So the example that works very well, the unfortunate example that works very well is the walkaway that occurred at Asnun Talk in the DOC program from last year. And because that occurred within the town of Enfield, we were responsible, and we did in fact undertake that notification. Because of the location of the facilities that are in Summers that are so close to us in Enfield, we're getting notified about a Summers event if it occurs. At that point, I think what we would do would be at a minimum, I suppose what I would call a firmly nudge to the Summers officials that the Everbridge system needed to be used. And that really would be the responsibility of either state DOC, who could access Everbridge, or the town of Summers, if it was occurring within their town. I do have a comfort level telling you that if I became aware that something had happened in Summers that was going to have a spillover effect in this town, and notification hadn't been made by either the state or Summers, that we would, we would climb out on that limb to make sure that our residents in Enfield were aware of that. It certainly would be our preference, and I have a confidence that it would be done by DOC or Summers, as it would be theirs more appropriately. As I've heard about that meeting, I understand that Summers wasn't present, and I understand that, and that DOC perhaps was not comfortable speaking on that specific point at that meeting.
Yes, because we have one resident that signed up for the state Everbridge, and he does not, didn't receive, you know, and we, you know, it's, it's really hard, because they're not situations that happen all the time. You know, road closures are, and those are inconveniences, but, you know, prison escape is, is a more urgent situation.
Any other questions? You mentioned signing, is there a spot where, I mean, could we make, maybe put, you know, Chris, on your website where people can sign up?
They already are.
They're already on?
They're on everything. Like I said, it's on the town manager's page, it's on emergency management, on police department page, I believe it's on DPW's page as well.
Is it charged or free?
Oh, it's free.
Free.
Absolutely.
Perfect. So sign up? Great. Anything else, gentlemen? Yes, go ahead.
Yes, sir, if I could. So the one additional piece of the equation that perhaps laterals back to me for your further either approval or edification, I'm not quite sure where we are on this one. The language that we have on the Enfield Alert Program, which is what leads one to Everbridge within the town website, when interpreted literally, would have us, again, I think, over notifying to a point where I think it would frankly produce the opposite effect of what we're driving at. And here are just a couple of quick examples. The language in the current webpage makes no distinction between a primary road, a secondary road, or a tertiary road. So if we had a road that was a U, for example, or we had a road that was one way in and one way out, that road would require the same degree of notification that a major thoroughfare would. These are practical considerations we take into account so as to not over Everbridge everyone. Additionally, the language on the webpage as it's currently written, and I don't, let me be clear, I'm not critical of who the original author is, I just think we're learning and we're improving. The language also makes no allowances for the fact that it's a middle-of-the-night situation where a vehicle strikes a pole, the pole is down in the road at 3:00 in the morning, and the number of angry calls that we're going to get, the number of angry calls that Mr. Bronson is going to get, and I suspect the number of angry calls that you're going to get if we pull the Everbridge trigger at 3:00 AM, it's not worth the benefit that we would achieve from that. That's another factor that we need to take into account in terms of pulling that Everbridge trigger. And finally, the language as it's currently written leaves no room for what I would consider the overly obvious situations. The bad storm, there was one last year, yes, last year, that hit the town. It was obvious, the trees were leaning sideways, the wind was blowing, the rain was coming down, and there wasn't a notification, in one particular case, on a secondary road, which caused some consternation within some segments of the town. In instances where an Everbridge notification would seem redundant, so redundant as to be unnecessary, our folks utilize good judgment in terms of using the system, and it's our intention, absent any contrary direction from Mr. Bronson or from you, to make those linguistic changes to the Everbridge Alert Program signup, so folks don't perceive that this is necessarily a contract, by way of example. Rather, we have to utilize good judgment in terms of when we use this.
Like any of our other ordinances or policies, it bears periodic review, much is why we brought the Snow and Ice presentation. So based upon the chief's recommendations, it's the prerogative in my office to make those amendments. I'm inclined to do so, but we wanted to share it with the council and put it on record so people would be aware. So what we'll do for this season, we're going to implement those, and we'll send the new policy out before and after. We'll also post it on the police site and on the manager's site so people are aware. They use very good judgment overall, it's a very successful program, very little error there, but they need to have that ability to have discretion so as to not, because they're following the letter of the policy, upset and wake up hundreds of residents unnecessarily. So we wanted to make, and bring that to your attention as part of this presentation. I thank the chief and Steve.
Any questions? Counselor Mangini.
Thank you both. Excuse me. Now, you, Chief, mentioned, excuse me, language issues with the policy. Will you be addressing the language? Will you be critiquing to make the language more usable?
I actually have a draft of that language that has been prepared, shared with Mr. Hall and shared with Mr. Bronson, subject to this discussion. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Any other questions? Anything else, gentlemen?
No, sir.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your patience.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. So we have, do we have a motion to a move this, do we adjourn a special meeting? Deputy Mayor Susak, second by Counselor Srazza, all those in favor? All right, I know we're late, so unless folks object, we're going to get right to the regular meeting. Welcome, everyone. Monday, December 16th, 2019. We are getting started at 7:36. Sorry we are late. Prayer, Counselor Sikala.
Thank you. Lord, in this busy but joyous time of year, we pray for love in our hearts, we pray for strength to forgive, and peace on earth. Let us remember the reason for the season. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Moving on to item three, roll call, please.
Counselor Sikala.
Here.
Counselor Hemler.
Counselor Kiner.
Here.
Mayor Ludwig.
Here.
Counselor Mangini.
Here.
Counselor Muller.
Here.
Counselor Riley.
Here.
Counselor Srazza.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Susak.
Here.
Counselor Ungary.
Here.
Counselor Bosco.
Here.
There's 10 members present, what is absent?
I am, yes, I have it here.
Moving on to item four, the fire evacuation announcement. In case of a fire, we do have an exit in the back of the room. Please, we move orderly, left or right, to the back doors, or to our left, to the audience's right. We have an exit door. Go through the doors, to the door, immediately to your left, down the stairs and out in the parking lot in case of a fire evacuation announcement. Moving on to item five, the minutes of the preceding meetings. The regular meeting November 12th, 2019, do I have a motion to approve? By Counselor Muller, second by Counselor Mangini. Is there any additions, deletions, subtractions, changes? Hearing none by Shaw Hands, all those in favor? Opposed, abstention? 10 in favor, zero against. Moving on to special meeting November 18th, 2019, do I have a motion to approve? By Counselor Muller, second by Counselor Ungary. Do I have any additions, deletions, changes, some subtractions? Hearing none by Shaw Hands, all those in favor? Opposed, abstentions? 10 in favor, zero against. Moving on to the regular meeting November 18th, 2019, do I have a motion to approve by Counselor Mangini? Second by Counselor Riley. Is there any subtractions, additions, deletions, changes? Hearing none by Shaw Hands, all those in favor? Opposed, abstentions? 10 to zero, 10 to zero. Moving on to item six, special guests. We welcome Della Fromant, our, what, Della's title?
Assessor.
The assessor, town assessor, sorry, Della. Paying taxes online demonstration, I think this is actually going to be very worthwhile for people, so thank you. And so this is just, you know, in a sort of what we've heard from residents, kind of would like to see, how do you pay your taxes online?
And accompanying her are final, Mr. John Wilcox.
Welcome.
His name and title, and the floor is yours.
I'm Della Fromant, the assessor and supervisor of revenue collection. What I'm going to do is very briefly show you, step by step, how to pay your bill online. It's real simple. You can do it from the town's homepage. It's real, right there, make a payment.
So it's on the left of the homepage?
Left of the homepage. You'll also find it under Departments, Tax, and also scroll down. Continue for a lookup and payment portal. Portal. It's also over here, we've got it in many different spots. They all bring you to the same screen. This first screen gives you an explanation if, in fact, those of you who are trying to get a clearance when paying your department, your motor vehicle taxes, and you need a clearance for registering a new vehicle, updating your current registration, there's a couple of points you have to follow. If you pay online and you're paying a late bill, you have to forward the email you're receiving from Point and Pay to taxcollector@enfield.org. The reason being is Point and Pay is an outside service that the town has a contract with for online payments. If you use an e-check, electronic check, there's a 10-day hold to make sure that the check is cleared. If you can provide proof to the town that the check clears within less than 10 days, you can email it, fax it in, bring it in, we'll clear you right before you leave the room. Same thing if you come in and you make your payment for late taxes and you need clearance, we clear you before you leave the room. It's all online, you're not looking for a piece of paper that you might have put in this pocket, and you get to DMV the next day and it's in the jacket that's home. It's all online now. There are fees associated with paying online, whether you pay online in the office or on the process at home on your own device, there are charges. It's two and a half percent of each transaction for credit card. It's flat $3.95 for your debit card. Do the math, sometimes paying with your credit card at two and a half percent might be less than that $3.95. And again, as you're going through this, it will tell you, let's go pay a bill. It's real simple. Everybody knows your name. You're just going, Mike, do you mind if I use yours?
Sure.
You better pay your taxes.
Now, bear in mind.
You better put my name in.
It's not case-sensitive. Currently, you have a choice. You can enter all, do now. Now, remember, our bills for January are not due yet. So it's not going to come up. Balance due. Again, January is not a balance due as of yet. So if, safest bet, click all. And that's it. Last name, space, middle initial.
First initial.
First initial. You're right. Thank you, John. You're going to get all of your history of all of your different payments. They're not in order. Different motor vehicles are going to show up in a different spot than your real estate. You just keep scrolling, and I'm not very good with this, until you get a shopping cart. That's the only thing you need to worry about. Those are the bills that need to be paid. All the others are your historic payments for the last 10 years. And spend a lot of time looking at what you've done. The only one that counts is that one with a shopping cart. They want to know, are you going to pay that? You want to put that to your cart? If you've got multiple vehicles, multiple real estate, you can do it all at once. I'm going to add it to the cart. And right now, that's all we've got. So we're going to look at the cart. And that's what it wants to say. You want to pay. You want to check out. And these are the terms and conditions. Again, you're agreeing to the fact that you will be assigned a value for using a credit card or your debit card. They're reminding you again if you need a clearance where to send that email confirmation from Point and Pay so we can clear your tax account with Department Motor Vehicle. And again, state statute requires that if you're paying multiple years on your tax bills, the oldest bill must be paid first. Want to pay your bill?
No. No, I don't.
Yeah, we all feel that way.
I'm retiring after this meeting, by the way.
This is where, if in fact...
I should have searched mine.
If you want to make a partial payment, you're going to click your edit button. And that's where you can change the amount you're going to pay, down here.
Unless you want the wrath of my wife. The answer is no.
Then you're going to, if you're not going to change the amount, you click continue. You fill in your credit card information. And then once you hit that continue button, that's going to be your confirmation email. Again, your email's required as part of the process up here in your credit card information and debit card.
So again, I'm not the boss, so I don't...
Understood.
I have a debit card, yes.
And again, that email is required. That's where you're going to get your confirmation. It's for your records. That's it.
So the email goes to the resident and the town? Right?
The town only gets a copy if you, as the taxpayer, wish us to receive it, whether for clearance or for some other purpose.
Okay, got it. Okay. So the resident has to keep that email?
They have to follow through, especially if they're looking for clearance with DMV. If you're not looking for a clearance for DMV, we go on and we clear Department Motor Vehicle holds through the computer system on a weekly basis.
Save your emails. Save your receipt. Actually, very helpful. Any questions? Councilor Bosco.
Will that, if you just pull up a name, will it pull up all the accounts or you have to put each corporation, each LLC? You know, if you pull up the company...
It's a big finance on the end.
Let me show you.
Yeah, let's pull up Joey's.
Since he asked the question, right?
That's right. I know.
Don't do that. We don't want to... We don't need to put any council's information up there anymore.
If you put in the different corporate names, they will all come up as they are listed with Department Motor Vehicle.
So you've got to put them in under the corporate names.
Yes. You can also choose to put it by address.
So now, when we do our taxes, we decide to pay them online. Usually, I go last day. It's like giving blood and paying my taxes. But we've run into the problems before where you've got so many different vehicles, you miss one. So this will be all straight in front of you.
Just find the shopping carts. Also, just as a side note, for those of us who used to be able to take some IRS deductions, if you click the IRS payment record for 2018, once you've paid for the entire year, it's after December 31st, that will give you a statement for just what was paid during that calendar year for your IRS, for your 1040s.
That's a nice feature. That's very nice.
So when you add one, will 19 be available?
19 payments? That's going to be switched over after the 31st.
31st, okay, got it. Great. Any other questions? I think this is great. I mean, it's a big deal because I can't tell how many people ask about paying online. And I'm glad this is going to go right on your website, right? This presentation, perfect. So I mean, so if you didn't see the presentation, right on the town manager's website's a little demonstration. This is great. So I appreciate you guys.
And the interest is cheaper probably than what the town's going to charge you.
The credit card, again, is 2.5%. Debit card's $3.95 flat. E-check is $2. Again, decide which works for your particular circumstance and financing.
Very good. Any other questions? Thank you both. Very helpful. Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to item seven, public communications. We ask that folks please refrain from personalities. And we are at 7:58. First time up, give five minutes. Would anyone like to speak for the council tonight? 7:48, right. 48, sorry. Yep, 7:48. So we have an hour, in case. Welcome.
Sorry. Joanne Alphonse, 1221 Enfield Street, apartment number 3, Enfield, Connecticut. Okay. I don't need to repeat my name again, right?
No, welcome.
Thank you. Okay. I can't believe we're here again fighting to keep the day center open. All of us that work at the day center were under the impression that the council wanted to make it work. Pam Brown graciously came out of retirement to use her expertise and knowledge to keep the program not only functioning, but growing. Lynn Daniel, our former recreation director, has been kind enough to come back and help get the program back on track the way it was in its former glory. Today, we had child daycare, interacting with our adult clients, and all were having a blast. Thursday, we're going to see the gingerbread houses in South Windsor. And every Wednesday, we go to the senior center and have bingo, fun bingo, zumba, and lunch. We also go bowling at Shaker Bowl. And we now have Maggie for music therapy, which the clients love. You had validation about the census at the day center. But remember, it's been a roller coaster between Dawn and Damian trying to shut it down for the past two or three years. We now have a social worker, Jen, and we increased our census from 6 to 14 and only moving forward. Another important point I'd like to try to convey is the importance of socialization. Home care is one of... is one-on-one. There's no trips, no reading buddies, no child daycare, no coffee hour with our peers. Our day center stimulates our friends' brains by doing trivia, word searches, current events. We have many physical games we do to keep our friends mobile, such as bowling, basketball, balloon toss, horseshoes, horse racing, and shuffleboard, to name a few. The clients deserve more notice of your intentions to shut the program down. We, the staff, also deserve the same respect. I truly thought you, the council, wanted to make the adult day program work. I honestly thought we had until the end of June to bring the census up. I, as well as my coworkers, were shocked to hear the council was voting tonight, whether to shut it down or not, at 1:30 today. I was infirmed of this vote. So what's the hurry? We had a new client start today and enjoyed herself so much, she got up and danced when Maggie was singing and playing her guitar. Our clients love coming in the morning and seeing their friends and sharing their days together. I would hate to see all their friendships dissolve because we can't make up our minds if the day center is a viable program. Worth saving. My opinion, yes, most definitely. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you. Anyone else like to speak for the council? Welcome. How are you doing?
Good.
Just name and address. Welcome.
Yes. Hi. My name is Pam Mills, 9 Hartford Avenue. And I'm just speaking off the cuff here. I was here a few years ago when this issue came up before. I am RN in a hospital and I have a lot of experience in all of these... I work in a hospital, but I have a lot of experience in all of the levels of daycare for elderly. And I'm here to speak in support of the Adult Day Center. I've been fortunate enough to utilize their services for two family members in the past 10 years. In the past two or more years, we've experienced concerning events in regards to the support of our town council and social service department. Whether this uncertainty has been driven by direct... by direction given to the social service department from the town council or by independent decisions within that department by the previous deputy director regarding closure and diminishing financial support from the town, it has caused my family members and my sister and I, as her advocate, their advocates for their care, considerable stress and uncertainty as to if this vital service would be there for us. We've seen the diminishing financial support resulting in the elimination of the recreation director, recreational field trips, elimination of two certified geriatric nurses with replacement of an uncertified geriatric manager. I am pleased that that has been rectified by bringing back, as has been mentioned, Lynn has come back as the recreational director and Pam Brown are back. We had been contacted by the former deputy social services director who informed us that we should seek other arrangements for a family member as the center would be closed as of last April, giving us only a very small timeframe to make arrangements. This was very upsetting to our 85-year-old family member as change can be very upsetting and distressing to the elderly. The result of these meetings has decimated individual meetings with every family member. And it was very... A lot of pressure put on us to meet with them directly, over the phone, in person. They would not leave us alone. They kept calling and calling until we met with them. The results of the meetings were... Decimated the daily census of the daycare as families struggled to find stable care for their family members. There should be more advertising, more people in there. It should be expanding. This town is one of very few that have adult day centers. Tolland has one. Stafford does not. I deal with a lot of people that come into the hospital. There is very little daycare out there and is a huge need. This is very, very cost-effective. Now, I personally have hit all of the different... I know how much all of this costs. Basically, your elderly are living on probably Social Security, about $12,000 a year. Adult day... Well, let me come back to that. People coming into the house for home care, companions and homemakers, all that, they're charging about $30 to $40 an hour. That's a lot of money. People don't have that kind of money. So they're probably going on Medicaid, okay? So you're probably going to have to put your person in a nursing home, okay? They're going to have to pay down. To afford that nursing home, you're going to have to pay down to about $12,000. You're going to have to sell all your assets, your house, everything you've got. Empty your bank accounts. Luckily, my... We ended up putting one of them... I had two people in there. One of them did end up going in a nursing home because of medical issues and could not be cared at home anymore. So nursing homes, they just parkway $402 a day, okay? That's a lot of money. It was a lot of money. Luckily, one of my family members had a long-term care policy. She had a million-dollar policy, okay? They don't sell those anymore. So unfortunately, that only covered... So $402 a day. They reimbursed at the maximum that she could get. They reimbursed $186 a day. That left with about $6,000 a month that she had to pay out of pocket. And she was... I'm sorry. I'm going to go really fast. I'm almost done. About $6,000 a month out of pocket. And she was self-pay all this time. Because you know what? She made too much money to go on Medicaid to pay down. She had too much money. Adult daycare costs $80 a day. So you tell me where we should be putting our money, okay? I'm saying expand, get in there, see how much they're doing for these people. And it's wonderful. We cannot replace it. I've supported your schools. I've supported your fire stations, your police stations. Let's put some support into these people. And you're all getting old. And you're going to be there very soon. So you better have some place for you to go, okay? That's what I've got to say. Thank you.
Appreciate it. Anyone else like to speak for the council?
Welcome. Thank you. George Young, 8 Holly Lane, Enfield, Connecticut. Good evening. Some of you may have read the article regarding the new water treatment plant in Portland, Oregon. After they appropriated $500 million for it, the city officials were left scrambling to come up with another $300 million. The original cost estimate did not include the cost of the pipes to run the water in and out of the facility. Although I doubt anything like that could happen here, it reminds me of the new fire station that was built and no one budgeted for the communication system, costing about $100,000. I share this story with you because the moral of the story is that you can never ask enough questions. Although our water pollution control project may not be as large as the one previously described, it is equally as important to our town. It is welcome news that we actually have a new superintendent of the water pollution facility. We should also thank Mr. Nunes, the director of the Public Works, for all his multitasking while this search went on. By the way, I will miss the magnet for when the days of collection are for the rubbish. But the update on the state's sorting policies is well received. In November 2017,[1486.55] In November 2017, there was an excellent presentation of the planning and zoning regarding the upgrading of the water pollution control facility, which can be seen online, as many of you know, as can the introduction to the Enfield sewer map, which is really enlightening and fascinating as to what happens from the time the toilet is flushed until it reaches the Connecticut River. If anyone has not seen it, I would encourage you to do so, and you'll be surprised as to what a facility it is. With that in mind, I have questions regarding the budget and the rate structure that residents will have to pay to make sure the system reaches its potential and we are able to sustain it going forward because in a couple of years, there'll be an added cost of debt service to pay for the bonds used for construction costs. In addition, the WP, still, WPC still owes the town 2.5 million in advances as of June 30th, 2018. Including in the current 2020 budget is a fund transfer of $640,517. The general fund shows intra-governmental transfer in of $390,517 coming from the WPC on page 14. Where did the other $250,000 get transferred to? Was it to repay part of the debt to the town's general fund? If that is the case, the comprehensive financial report for the year ended June 30th, 2018 indicated on page 3.5 that the WPC rates were structured to provide enough revenue to pay back the general fund $300,000 a year over a 10-year period. Has the period of repayment been extended? Once again, since the WPC operates independently from other funds in town, I asked the question, is there a formal agreement between the town and the WPC? And why doesn't the WPC, WPC pay the town interest on this advance? If we look through the capital improvement program for WPC on page 160 of the budget, there are some changes that I would like to ask about. In 2019 and 2021 through '25, there is a $500,000 per year budgeted for collection system in advance of roadwork. I understand that there was a planned delay to not fund this for 2020, and I wondered if this hindered the roads 2015 project in any way? Has this all been completed and for the roads 2015 project? Or is there more that needs to be done? In looking at the 2020 budget for the general fund, and still in the budget, the register of voters section on page 17, I've noticed that no matter how the categories, salaries part-time and salary election workers are reconfigured from year 2019 to 2020, the same total of $54,000 is there. End on page 18. What are the stipends for? Which is always my question. That also totaled $54,000 per year. On page 18 of the budget, it calls the election workers as overtime. Is this just a nomenclature problem or is it overtime from elsewhere? Or are these workers 10-99 people?
Thirty seconds.
How much?
Thirty seconds.
There is no FICA or Medicare budgeted for them. I realize in these times of less mailings, we should have less postage. However, it is true that the postage rates have increased, and I don't know why the postage account has gone from $2,800 to $6,700 per year when the printing and reproduction costs have only gone from $200, up $200 from 500 to 700. We're closing in on budget time for the next go-around, and I hope the council members will ask the tough questions on behalf of their constituents. It doesn't have to be a big budget to be sure the expenditure makes sense.
No, sir. Anyone else like to speak for the council?
Welcome.
Good evening. Thank you. Raymond Peabody, 370 Washington Road, Our Fair Town. Couple of things I'd talk about. First of all, Rhodes, I want to thank you for, Town Manager, and people for getting Birchwood paved. It's nice to have curbs and sidewalks. However, something was missed. Between Hemlock and Birchwood, the sidewalks really are dangerous. I walk my dog between 5:30 and 6 o'clock every morning, and I gotta be real careful, especially there's a little bit of snow in the ground. We have a number of retirees that take walks twice a day, and they gotta walk there. Couple of years ago, one of them fell and had to be picked up by Enfield ambulance and taken to the hospital. I know the budget is passed for that. It was never considered, but possibly, please take a look into it in the future. Secondly, on tonight's agenda, you're gonna be replacing a board of education member, and I would like to honestly see Stacy Thurston get unanimous approval. I worked with Stacy on the board, when I was on the board, and I'll tell you what, she's tireless, she works behind the scenes in committees, never missed a committee meeting that I can recall unlike others. And she does a really good job. She speaks when she needs to, and she always takes into consideration the students, the teachers, the parents, and the taxpayers. Thirdly, I know you guys are gonna have a hard budget season coming up. It's on the horizon. I urge you to take a look at each program, look at participation in each program, look at the funds for each program, and are we truly spending our money well? That goes without saying. I know many of you do do that, but make sure you, please do your due diligence. And again, if the program's worthwhile, fund it. If it's not meeting its needs, don't fund it. To me, it's black and white from, from the world I live in. If you have 1/30 of your capacity, you gotta take a look at it. However, on the other hand, we need to look at the human side of things. There are people who need things, and I'm basically talking about our greatest generation, the people that built this town. And that goes from Depression-era kids to people who are Korean War veterans and beyond. But again, we don't have easy fiscal times. It's tough. Our taxes are high, our demands are high, and it falls on you 11 folks to figure out what's what. And I appreciate the good work, and to tell you the truth, you're in my prayers, man, because you all need it. And that's really it. Thank you. And the last thing I'd like to leave you with is my own personal priorities when I was on the Board of Ed and really, really active was public safety's first, public education is second, everything else is tied for third. Kind of a hard stand to take, but if you think about our future, you think about our safety, think about where programs hit the majority of the people in town, I think that's a pretty good set of priorities. Thank you, and have a great night and happy holidays.
Thank you. Sorry, anyone else like to speak for the council? Bob. Name and address, sir. Welcome.
Bob Teacats, off of Orlando Drive. I think, I think Ray's got it backwards. I think the dog walks Ray if the sidewalks are that bad. If you want to find out about Enfield, there's a couple of websites, city-data or neighborhood, what was that, Neighborhood Scout? That gives you the full picture of Enfield, the weather, you can go back 20 years, look at the employment in the police department, the number of police officers, you can compare with other towns, and so it's a good comparison. But the problem is, I guess, printing it out is a challenge at this point. And it doesn't print out very well. But the trend analysis of the, the school system is that it's really declining. It's declining about 1% to 2% a year. Just for instance, the births in 2013 were 375 students. What showed up in this year was 321. So what happened with those other students? Lot of them go out of town to schools, they go to parochial school, they go to private schools. Some, some come in from other towns, some students leave to other towns. The trend is 1% to 2% a year is declining. Enfield had three peaks in their, their enrollment. It was, I spoke about 1971, it was 1928, '29 was the peak. The second peak, which I believe in the 1880s, there was a major peak because the mills got out of bankruptcy, Thompson was out, people took it over, expanded the mills. You had three high schools in 1880, Hazerville High School, you had Enfield High School and Thompsonville High School. Thompsonville High School was the, was the largest, and that was converted by Parkman into Enfield High in the, in 1890. So, the trend is still down, the population, what's happening with the population, we don't know with the prison system is, they won't release the statistics because they're getting beat up by the people on the early release program. We don't know what the, the real population is in prison. We know there's three guards for every prisoner in the, in the, in the prison system in Connecticut. And as soon as marijuana is legalized, they'll probably empty more out of the prison, so that affects the, the census in 2020. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. Anyone else like to speak for the council? Lucian.
Welcome, sir.
Lucian LaFave, 54 Kimberly Drive, also Commander Post 154 and Vice Chair of the Enfield Veterans Council. While it's still fresh in our memories, I'd like to, to just bring up the Race Across America program that just took place on Saturday. I want to publicly thank my wife, Pam Townsend, and Lori Gates for the wonderful program that was put together. Unfortunately, the convoy part of it had to be canceled due to weather. Saturday, we had some rain, turned into a light drizzle. A lot of people still showed up for the program. I just want to let people know, if you didn't go, you can watch it on ATV. ATV was there to televise it. It's a great program, and programs like this don't just appear from nowhere. There's a lot of planning, logistics, everything that goes into these programs, and between Pam and Lori, they did a great job. This year, we had the most wreaths ever to place in St. Pat's Cemetery. I believe last year, we were at like 347, I think, and this year, they put on random veterans' graves, not to account for the wreaths that were reserved for a particular person. I think it was like 1,053 wreaths that were put out on Saturday. So, again, I want to thank Pam and Lori for all the hard work that they did, the support from the town, the veterans' organizations, the, the school, the, there's just too many people to, to thank. It was a great program, and, you know, things pop up on a daily basis, planning for that. On Thursday, they got a call that somebody said, "We've got 41 boxes of wreaths, you want them? Tell me yes or no now." They took the wreath, then once we got the wreath, it was, okay, now we've got the wreath, how do we get them from point A to the cemetery to be placed? Simple phone call, and without hesitation, someone said, "Yep, we'll do it. Not a problem." And that's just the way this town operates. The, the support from the businesses, the public, everything was just phenomenal, and just a big thank you. And the program is actually an ongoing thing. There's already wreaths, like they call it, they're in the hopper for next year. There's already 40 wreaths slated for the 2020 program. Throughout the year, wreaths can be purchased, and there are gonna be times where Race Across America does special things, like buy one, get one free. So for the same cost, you double the number of wreaths that we can put on those veterans' graves. The goal is to put one on every veteran's grave at St. Pat's, and there's roughly 1,600 veterans, so we were able to cover all but about 550 or so this year, which was the, the best ever. The goal, like I said, is to get every one of those veterans' graves decorated with a wreath. And Pimp took a ride over there Sunday after the program, and driving through, the only remnants of that entire program that happened were the wreaths displayed on those veterans' graves. There was no trash in the cemetery. Everything was like it was, other than those wreaths being displayed and honoring those veterans that are laid to rest in St. Pat's. So, again, thank you to everybody in the community, and we look forward to having more people out there next year. We had a good crowd considering the weather this year. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak for the council? For the first time? For the second time? Mr. Young?
George Young, Holly Lane. Since I just previously mentioned overtime, I still believe that the overtime that appears in the Thompsonville revitalization budget of $50,000 belongs to the police department area where the chief is in control of it. After all, as I understand it, the money is for police patrols in the Thompsonville section. Let's not bury the cost of the police protection that the new train station there was when it arrives. Speaking of the Thompsonville revitalization area, I'd like to throw out a suggestion to help the area in progressing forward. One of the detriments to starting a business, improving your home, or buying a new car in the area is the Fire District Number Two's mill rate. It is currently 6.79 for real estate and business property and $5 for motor vehicles. They are each up slightly from 2019, when they were 6.73 and 3.20 respectively. In some cases, they are almost double that of any other of the four fire districts in town. When fires are responded to in town, most, if not all, the districts respond to the same fires as most of the other major events, which they do, which is great because we do have some dedicated full-time, part-time, and volunteer members. At budget time, regardless of the collection from each district's taxpayers, the fire districts are, pay their share of the amount that they budgeted for, which is probably paid in August to September of that fiscal year. The grand total of all four, of all the fire districts' budgets is whatever they budgeted for, and the taxpayers pay that portion in one payment in July, August of that same fiscal year, and it is transferred from the town to each district shortly thereafter. I'd like to counsel the Town Manager and the Town Attorney to look into removing this burden from all the residents to be able to pay the fire district's tax in two installments similar to how the real estate taxes are paid. After all, the fire districts don't need all those money at once, and the taxpayers need some temporary relief. The other part of my suggestion is to take the grand total of all of the fire districts' budgets, as mentioned previously, and set one town-wide mill rate. I know this would be a small burden for the rest of the town, but it would do a lot for District Two residents and business owners. It would help get Thompsonville moving, as the council and everyone else in this room talks about. On a lighter note, I have given Councilor Riley a copy of the Blue Book, and I, I'm hoping we progress forward with that.
Thirty seconds.
Okay. The Town Manager's project and activities report this month was really informative, especially the treasurer's report. I won't go into it now. Last month, I asked the newly-elected council members to ask the constituents, ask their constituents, constituents to serve on boards and fill vacancies. I'm not sure why, but there seems to be a lot of applicants in the managers' report this month, but there are still many spots to fill. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak for the council for the second time? Hearing none, I declare public communications closed. Moving on to item nine, counselor, excuse me, eight, council, excuse me, item eight, council communications. Councilor Mangini?
Thank you. Just, um, I'm sorry.
Nope, so go ahead. Nope. Yeah, your first.
Okay. I just wanted to, uh, comment slash inquire. I know I brought this forward to leadership before. The Warming Center, Safe Harbor it's called, did appear before Rotary this past Wednesday with a very nice presentation on what their purpose is, what their function is, how they service the people of our town, and Rotary was able to give them a monetary, you know, contribution. It appears, from what I'm told, that the group had come forward to the town as recent as last year, looking for some assistance with grant writing and/or some funding, and at this juncture, they haven't received any, or they have not received any direction. And I would like to see us at maybe budget time or maybe through social services, reach out to the group and see what we can do as a town to help the cause, because that cause is actually helping the people of our community, and we need to be cognizant of the fact that they need, you know, monetary contributions, they need supplies. So how can the town assist? So I'm gonna put that out there, and this may be something for brainstorming, for goal-setting, but, and there's really no reason to answer my question, but if you can, town staff, address any of this, I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Councilor Sicola.
Thank you. Couple of things. I was fortunate enough to also attend the Race Across America event this past Saturday, and it was just a beautiful ceremony. I go every year, and it's, I, I believe that the event gets bigger every year, and the audience gets bigger, even, even in the rain. Joanne and Pam, I too am disheartened to see it on the agenda. Quite frankly, I'm disgusted to see it on the agenda, especially since during the budget, we said we were gonna give it a year. Six months later, guess what's happened? I think I even said this a couple of meetings ago, that this was exactly what was gonna happen, and here we sit. So, I'll comment more on that later, but I share your disgust. Through the manager, or to the, through the mayor, to the Town Manager, I sent an email about a week and a half about joint facility questions. I haven't gotten a response on that. A couple of questions that came up after that meeting. Also, and I don't know, Chris, if you need to talk to Donald or whoever, but the new traffic pattern on the Broadbrook and Town Farm section, I really think there needs to be some permanent signage, some reflectors put on the barriers, something. I mean, I drive that all the time. I generally drive it at 5:00 AM in the morning on the way to the gym, and I've been driving it for 20-something years, and I still am not used to the traffic pattern. So, I don't, I know there's cones where the road used to be, but that's pretty temporary. So I think we need some, some sort of warning. I don't care if it's signage, reflections, something. So I'd like to have somebody look at that. And lastly, I would like to make a request, and Donna and Kelly and I are on the policies and procedures, and I want to make sure that each town council member is getting each and every applicant for the committees and commissions that they apply for, even if they're not going to be acted on during that meeting. I want a copy of each and every applicant. I don't know why that stopped. Somewhere along the time, in the last six years, it stopped, so I want to make sure I get each and every applicant. That's it for me. Thanks.
Councilor Ungary, then Councilor Connor.
Along with what Councilor Mangini was discussing about the Warming Center, I attended a meeting at New Day Church, which was given by Monica Wright, and she did a great job. She gave a, a complete overview of the center, how it operates, the needs and functions. And they, there had to be almost 50 people in that room that came that want to help. So I think it's kind of going in a direction where the churches are all gonna kind of come together and help donate, volunteer, stay overnight, donate food, blankets, those kind of things. So that's all in the works. People are looking to volunteer or donate, they can contact Monica Wright. There's different training that you have to go through if you want to stay there and work, and she can give you all that information.
Thank you. Councilor Connor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd also like to agree with what Councilman Sicola said about a number of issues as it relates to adult daycare. I will also make some comments when we get to that resolution. And I'm also asking for the applicants of all people who've applied for various boards and commissions, for us to get copies of those applicants. Apparently, this before I got on the council, apparently, the council did get access to this, and I would like that to happen again. Number two, Enfield has always been known as a patriotic town, and that certainly was in effect Saturday. And, you know, congratulations again to Lori and Pam. That was just an incredible ceremony. I attended one ceremony in Beaufort, South Carolina, there's a federal cemetery there, and much larger than Enfield, but we would put them to shame. This was an absolutely incredible, incredible event that you guys put on, and I, I thank you for that. It was, it was a very moving event as well. And thirdly, we have any, we have a police officer in Enfield, Lieutenant Keith Parent, who is now deployed in Africa. And the students of Prudence Crandall School, and I want to give a, a shout-out to those students, and especially to the teachers at, at Prudence Crandall School, they heard that this lieutenant is deployed overseas, and they wanted to do something special for him during the Christmas holidays. So all the fifth grade classes got together under the guidance of one of the teachers, Mrs. Melanie O'Connor, who happens to be my daughter, and a number of other fifth-grade teachers. And what they did was, they made cards, they, they bought candy and cookies and lip gloss, whatever. They brought all these things together that they wanted to present to Chief Fox to be mailed to Lieutenant Parent. There were a number of police officers there, and I've got to say that the, the students at, at Prudence Crandall, the fifth-grade classes, were just absolutely incredible. And, you know, I can remember when I was that age, and I can remember a bunch of fifth-graders coming together. We were not as well-behaved as those kids were. So my, I, I think they did a remarkable, remarkable job, and it was really beautiful, and we didn't anticipate this was going to happen. And what was really beautiful, and we didn't anticipate this was going to happen, but the police department was able to Skype Lieutenant Parent, and Lieutenant Parent thanked the kids, and as he was thanking them, he kind of broke down. It was a very sensitive moment, and what was really beautiful is that the kids are learning at an early age to respect our police officers and to respect our military veterans as well. So my hat's off to those kids and those teachers at Prudence Crandall School for what they did. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Councillor Mueller?
Buzz Robotics is having a fundraiser tomorrow night at Red Robin from 5:00 to 8:00. I hope they're wrong about the weather. The fundraiser's to help the Buzz Robotics team members to send them to the 2021 Robotics World Championship in Detroit, Michigan, from April 29th to May 2nd. This event gives Buzz Robotics students the chance to compete with other robotics teams from all around the world. They have an opportunity to meet with representatives from the industry and higher education as well. Thank you.
Councillor Riley?
Thanks. All right, so first, I want to say that Reefs Across America, like everybody has saying, was a wonderful time. Even though it was raining, people were still in good spirits, and it was really great. I love seeing the scouts participate in the ceremony and then lay the wreaths afterwards. I thought that was a great thing. I want to thank Mr. Young for showing me the book. I only flipped through it briefly, but it's exactly what I was thinking of getting together. So this is good. This is a great starting step, and I'm going to make sure that I find out where this came from and how we can get it back out, which kind of ties into my next part. I went to the kite meeting, which was really well-attended, and it kind of put in perspective how much we offer our children and families, and how we're dedicated to helping our community. I just hope that we can continue to grow in the ways that we can communicate all these services out to the people that need it the most, because still, a lot of people don't know of all the different kinds of assistance that we offer. It's kind of like we need a separate committee that just does, you know, public outreach and deals with new and different ways to distribute all of the different services that we have and pinpoint it to the people that really need it, because usually, the people that need it the most are the ones that don't know that's out there. So I'm going to get going on this book, and hopefully, we'll get other books together, maybe for different age groups. That would be great. I wanted to thank Youth Services. They let first readers do a radio interview with them. All the kids did a great job asking questions. They had a lot of good questions prepared, and it'll be on the SNON Talk radio station. I'm not sure when, but I wanted to thank them for that, and I just wanted to wish everybody a safe and happy holiday season.
Councillor Ungai?
I wanted to add that we had a time of recognition, of anniversaries of all our town employees, so I wanted to congratulate all of them. They've been with the town from anywhere from five to 40 years. Kemble Lee that spoke here earlier, he's been with the town for 40 years, and he knows what he's talking about, so congratulations to him and everyone else. I also attended the Reefs Across America, and that was a wonderful ceremony, so thank you to Pam and Lori for that. Also, I wanted to recognize Rachel's challenge. They had their pancake breakfast, and even though the weather was inclement, there was a lot of people that were there. It was really well-attended, and I saw our chairman of the Board of Ed running around flipping pancakes and serving people, and so kudos to him and his whole crew that was back there. Rachel's challenge is an important part of our community, and I highly respect it and all that they do.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Susak?
First of all, I'd like to read a message from Kelly, because Kelly's not attending tonight because she is traveling to Fort Jackson, South Carolina, to see her daughter graduate from Army boot camp. So we commend Veronica. Good job done. And Kelly would also like to extend, you know, happy holidays, Merry Christmas, and a Happy New Year to everyone. And with the weather, Kelly, safe travels, and congratulations, Veronica, on your graduation.
You going to make a motion?
Yep. I have more things. Don't rush me. Okay, and I also want to note that in the par, I saw that the Crogge Corridor Study for I-91 to Summers is going to be updated, and that's a great, that's great for, you know, the 190 corridor and Skidaco and the Hazerville Center. We've already, we're going to make a motion now to suspend the rules and move items B-1 through B-6, B-10, B-12 through 16, B-17, 18, 19, E and F to miscellaneous and proceed to vote.
Motion made. Suspend the rules, seconded by councillor Mueller. Is there any discussion on the motion?
Could I just ask a question?
Yep.
What happened to B-15?
It's B-12 through B-16. It's not there.
Okay, sorry.
Yep. No worries. Any other?
I'm going to make a clarification. We have not moved B-9 because we have to do some modifications to the scope on the facilities, and B-17 is replacing B-20. There was a little confusion as to alternate versus a permanent seat on the ZBA. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, but show of hands, all in favor of spending the rules? Opposed? Extentions? Ten in favor, zero against? Anyone else? Council Communications? Let's have two, three quicks items. You know, the money in the budget mentioned for the police, those are for the walking patrols already in town, so it has nothing to do with the train. You know, maybe we'll expand if the train comes, but those are the current walking patrols that, you know, in the budget. I just want to quickly thank the Enfield, East Granby, and Stafford Eagles. No, Lucian made a comment about Reefs Across America, and the boys' hockey team, which is now a three-town team, actually showed up in the rain, volunteered, and helped hand out the wreaths, and again, really proud of our kids. And on that note, it is the beginning of the winter sports season. Girls' basketball starts, boys' basketball, wrestling, hockey, swimming, I think, starts as well, I believe. I might be off there, but there's a whole bunch of sports starting over the holiday weekend. There's a tournament at Enfield High, girls' basketball. Local towns playing. Feel free to come up and watch some basketball for a very affordable rate. So the winter season starts, and again, just as they like to do, the town is, the folks who go out there and decorate through all the different weather events we've had, the town is beautiful. Folks have decorated great across the town, starting with Halloween. Here we are on Christmas. And again, like I said last year, go to your local coffee shop, spend a little money, put the kids in the car seats, and go drive around town and save yourself a little money and look at all the beautiful lights that are all over town. Again, folks do a great job of decorating their homes. Moving on to item nine, town manager report.
Good evening, Mayor and council. First, under my report, we have a freshwater pond dam update. I just wanted to apprise the council that this had started some weeks ago when the AP wrote a story indicating that the freshwater dam was in jeopardy, and perhaps it posed a risk to health and property. I'm very thankful that we do have local press that looks a little deeper into these issues, and Anthony, and I may not pronounce his name properly, Anthony Brancaforte of the J.I., took a lot of time to talk to us about the situation, looked at the documentation, wrote a very good, measured article about it, and I'm appreciative of that. There is no risk to health or life or property at the freshwater dam. There's a classification that it's hazardous, quote, and that was really based upon the fact that there was an occupied fire station adjacent to it, which is now empty. We met with a state official in charge of dams in Connecticut. I'll get to that in a moment, but for that, the classification would be lowered. We didn't push for that at this juncture because we're hopeful that there will be a, you know, an adaptive reuse of the fire station, and that it will become occupied. But under current rates, that fire station wouldn't have been allowed to be adjacent that close to a dam. But downstream, and of most concern to us is property owners and homes. Donald Nunes, myself, Kasha, and the supervisor from the State of Connecticut, Deep, we toured it, and the homes, it's a lowered brookway, and Anthony was kind enough to say, I mean, when we did the repairs this past summer, we actually opened the gates and we drained the entire pond. It's small, it's not, as I said to him joking, it's not the Hoover Dam holding back Lake Mead. But we take public health and safety very, very, you know, as a priority, and even at the point, if the entire brook were flooded, the closest home is 10-foot above it. So there is no risk to people downstream. But despite that, and Anthony looked at this carefully and did a good reporting, there are different criteria. While technically, they put the dam to be in poor condition, all of the components, but for one, are in good condition. There's a spillway that was in good condition. The gates, they made recommendations of some repairs. We did that. There are training walls. There are other, all the other components of the dam were good, except to the side, on the other side of the fire department, the training walls, they call it. It's a stone wall, and there was some area that needs repair. We actually went out and got bids, three different bids. We know the cost is going to be in the vicinity of $400,000. That was done a few years ago, so it will be updated. They recommended to just not do a repair, but an entire replacement. The last manager in 2017 looked at our CIP, did a 10-year plan, and did include, as was reported, that this was funded for in 2025. The state inspector said she probably would be more comfortable if it would be done sooner, so we're working collaboratively with her, John Kabibbo, the engineer. We're going to do some more studies of it. She wants to perhaps have seepage looked at to make sure that it's not in any imminent risk, or it hasn't really gotten worse. Visually, it has not. She was comfortable with the plan we have in place, but we're going to work with her closely, and I indicated to her, if we have to move up the timeframe by a couple of years and put it into our CIP and the next budget, the one thereafter, we would certainly do that if that is her recommendation. I'd like to say that, you know, we have a good rapport with our regulatory friends in the DEP. They've helped us at the water pollution control, working with Amtrak of a right-of-way issue. They've worked with us on many other issues, and really, I think sometimes people look at them as they're necessary evil. I don't look at them that way. They are a fountain of information. They have the public health and safety in the forefront of their mind. They are great retainers of expertise in their areas, and in my experience with them, we get along well with them in all of our departments, and they really help us in our projects. They have some good and innovative ideas, and we'll continue to work with them collaboratively for the good of the town, and this is another example of that. So that's the update on the dam. As we promised, Mr. Bosco, I mean, sometimes we pass legislation, and then it is forgotten. Years go by, and we go, oh my goodness, how did this creep into something that we didn't intend it to become? The facility use policy that we looked at, the field use, we had indicated when we did the amendment that we would have a review in December. So you could review it and say, hey, is it working? So to that end, Mr. Mark Garvis here this evening with Mr. Nunes is going to give a report as to the financial and also how the policy seems to have worked in the last season in that way. If during the winter we want to adjust it, or people come forward with recommendations, we'll have an ability to amend it before we're into the spring, like happened last year. I will also tell you that part of facility use that we've been looking at, and Kasha's been hitting up a team with the school department as well, is indoor, some more of the indoor use of auditoriums. We're close to having that done, and actually, it's going to go before facilities use, and we're going to let them review it, and then it'll come to the council. Because again, a lot of that was antiquated and needed to be updated, both as to who can use it and at what cost. So I give you Mark, and I give you Donald.
Welcome, gentlemen.
Good evening. You want to start? Okay, the policy, is this, the policy that we went through so far has been working well. Basically, we did a lot of work on the outside aspect. We cut down, last year, we were averaging tournaments at the Brainerd Park and every weekend. We've cut those down. Since we put the policy in effect and are making a charge now, we've only had two tournaments there this year compared to one on every weekend last year. That averages, to us, for me personally, in the buildings and grounds, we were running 10 to 12 games on a Saturday in a tournament, which is approximately two weeks' worth of a Little League field in one day. That stopped. Our fields are in much better shape over there now, a lot less use. So, and we had one soccer tournament that the Enfield Soccer Club paid to use. We did have a couple of leagues come in, and then they did go to get the waiver, so we did refund their money. So so far, in the sinking fund for ball field use, there's only, we only brought in $2,500 because it just dropped, it dropped quite a bit. So that's it for the outside. For the inside, it's just, we've been, it's basically the same as it's been through the years, the dance studios. We have University of St. John's that uses our JFK. It's $400 per session, eight-week session. And we have the, I want to say Village, so the Opera House players, they're using, they're renting, every few months, they're renting the annex for their shows, and that's it. We're just, we don't have that much use since we changed the policy, and personally, I think it's good. We should, I think it's working out well.
Councillor Bosco?
So I know when we looked at this, was a real big pain, but you're saying now the fields are starting to come back? Because I know one of the problems were, is fields were getting so beat that, you know, they had no time to recoup, so you're saying them are starting to get in better shape again?
Yeah, just cutting down on a Saturday, like I say, you start, you know, in a tournament, you would start at 7:30 in the morning, you'd have a game every hour until 10:00 PM. That's a lot of use in one day. That's two weeks, at least two weeks on a Little League field, two weeks worth of use, and that would happen from snow to snow. And that's been cut down, and it's just tremendous use, 10 games a day. It's just, and we were spending a lot of time on Mondays, you know, cleaning up after the weekend tournaments and whatnot. They did a good job cleaning, but by Mondays, we would have, you know, two or three people all day long just cleaning, and that's been cut down a lot, too. I'm happy with the way the fields are looking. They're coming back green again, and it's not just Brainerd Park, it's all over, so that's.
So what you're saying is, then, not only did we get a little bit of revenue, but our expenses were cut way down, because it must have been very expensive to maintain for all that, so.
Yeah, we take the two or three people that we'd spend a day there and put them somewhere else doing other jobs. So I mean, it's really, it's, I think it's a success.
And do you think we need to look at it anymore, or are we pretty much all set?
I think right now, I think it's pretty good. I think that every, the word is out, and, you know, I think it's working well. I think it's widespread. I get a lot of requests. I get a lot of requests for different school systems wanting to use our turf fields. They're, you know, with the increases and whatnot, they're, that's cut down also, you know. We have the lights on the turf fields, and, you know, when it gets in the fall, they want to use our fields, and it used to be, you know, $200. Now it's gone up, so we're getting a little less use there, but I think we did what we had to do, and I think it worked out well.
Good, thank you.
Councillor Kira?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I really wanted to respond to the town manager's remarks on the dams. Is this the appropriate time to do it, or?
Want to wait after, you guys question on a dam? I mean, sure. I mean, if you guys want to sit tight for a second, go ahead.
I appreciate that. Thank you. The town manager is absolutely right. The designation of a high-hazard dam is simply that. It's a classification and nothing more than that. And all that means is that if the dam were to fail, that does mean loss of life. The Associated Press did say that there were 12 dams in Connecticut that were in poor condition, but I will defer to the town manager's report that this dam is not ready to fail, and I appreciate that. Even with climate change and the idea of a 100-year event occurring every, maybe every 25 years, there is certainly some cause for concern. My only question to you, Mr. Town Manager, is we are supposed to get a report every two years from, I'm not sure who, either from Deep or from the DPW on this dam, since it's considered a high-hazard dam in poor condition. Can we get that report when it comes out?
Yeah, we discussed that with the supervisor of Deep, and basically around 2016 after the report, they had given us in writing from the dam unit, a exemption moving forward that until we really were going to start the repairs and get them done, that we didn't have to do that expenditure. But we're looking to see if it would behoove us, because it's costly to do another assessment now, but they basically gave us a standing exemption until we were going to actually do the repairs, to do a report every two years. And we have that documentation. Mr. Nunes and John Kabibbo found it. that documentation. Mr. Nunes and John Kabibbo found it. But we've talked with the DEEP supervisor, and we're going to be doing some things and assessment, just to make sure. But her looking at it and looking at the last report, she was, again, as you said, comfortable that it isn't in risk of imminent failure, anywhere near it. It didn't really look as if it was any further damage, as I would say, to the area where there's a few stones missing for when they last did it. So I think she was very comfortable. I won't speak for her. But we're going to be in communication. I told her, we'll work together. And when she has a recommendation as to when we should do the repair, when we should do another report, we just don't want to throw good money after bad, to have somebody spend $40,000 to say, yeah, those stones are still missing. We don't see any other deterioration, I think, would warrant it. If she asks us to do it, there was some other reporting that we're going to be doing with her. But I think we're in good shape, and we'll report to you next month.
I can understand this. As you've indicated, this is not the Hoover Dam. And I certainly appreciate your diligence and that of the DPW in looking into this further. And all I'm asking for is when the time goes on, as time goes on, that is, when these reports become public, I think the town council, I would like to receive a copy of those reports.
Absolutely. And we're doing a prioritization of the CIP. There are a lot of different projects around town. You heard about the transfer station and others, but that doesn't really pose a risk to health or safety. Some of these do. So we're going to have a top-10 list for your goal-setting. Also, as I said, John Wilcox, the finance director, has leasing programs. Just so we understand, leasing, we commonly think we're doing vehicles, commercial vehicles or police vehicles. But to make it more consistent and predictable, they employed a methodology to do leasing for other things, too, with CIP, such as the dredging of the dam. So we put about $125,000 away for four years, and then we, the culmination was, we did the project this past summer. Likewise, that was the plan for the dam wall. But we're going to upgrade it. Certainly, it's much like the council moved immediately. On the South River Street Bridge, when the DEP inspectors went out, albeit they didn't say you should close the bridge down there, they thought, and they had real concerns about safety. So we didn't leave any room for error. We closed it down. This council immediately, we did the engineering, we appropriated the funding, and we repaired it immediately. Likewise, if we for an instant thought that this dam was, and even though I don't think it's a risk to life or property, if we thought there was any risk of failure, we would move it up this year in our budget and say to you, we've got to do it. It's a priority. So we're trying to bring all the other CIP, the top-10 list, to you. We'll look at this one. We'll work with DEEP. And if, I certainly think we're going to have to do it before 2025. But anything that becomes available to us, and once we've talked to DEEP in January, I'll report back to the council.
Thank you for your diligence. I really appreciate that. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Counsel Sikala. You all set? Anyone else? Thank you, gentlemen.
And I'd like to thank Mark personally, because when this policy was implemented, he was the brunt of all of the people calling and scheduling and complaining and going, what the heck's going on here? And it was a lot of work, but he had to have a thick skin. He's known a lot of these people. They're from town, and I thank him for his diligence and doing that service to us. Because I think the end result was, it's a very successful program. We accomplished what we wanted. We wanted to get some relief for the fields. We didn't want to be being used by outside agencies for them to make a profit, but we wanted to accommodate those homegrown teams that have used it and through the exemption. So I think it was a great success, Mr. Bosco.
...
All right, well, to all of us who received them, I think it was worthwhile in the end. So thank you.
I do have one question, sorry. In the policy, or has there been talk about, because, Mark, you talked about how almost every weekend at Brainerd, there was tournaments. And now, sort of last season, there was miraculously only two. What happens if somebody does hold a tournament there and didn't ask for the, you know, for the rights? Are there fines that have been discussed? I mean, has that been something that the subcommittee has kicked around?
I defer to Mark. I don't think anybody had the gumption to go there illegally and trespass without going through the process. But I think if they did, we'd send the police, and they would be removed. It'd be an illegal trespass. We have a policy. It's marked...
But it's a public field.
It's a town field. It's not open to the general public.
Right. So let's say it was a town field, and somebody went to play a game there.
We've always allowed local, you know, people to go have, we're not going to stop...
I'm not saying people did. I'm just curious if that's been discussed.
I don't think there was an issue that Mark brought to our attention, you know, pickup games and whatnot. We obviously allow that. But we're talking about organized teams that are doing this for profit. They're the ones who basically chose to go elsewhere. If it becomes an issue, I want to speak for you, Mark. I don't think it was a problem.
I don't, I didn't hear of anything.
I don't necessarily think it was a problem either. I'm just curious.
But we would address it. I think, as I say, they would be there improperly, and we would ask them to leave politely.
Okay.
Counsel Sforza.
Mr. Manager, just piggybacking on that, it's the same thing we already have in place now, that we have Brainerd Park, but there's hours of operation. And even though it's a public park, if they're there, and contrary to what the ordinance says, fires, whatever, dogs without leashes, it could be enforced.
Yes, and our turf also says that by permit, town residents only. So that's been updated as well.
Thank you, gentlemen. Appreciate it.
Continuing. Again, thank you, Mr. Mayor, on the T-Ville overtime. The council specifically wanted that separate, so that it didn't get subsumed in the general police overtime for the reason of transparency, because we wanted individuals to know that we had a dedicated effort to do the walking patrols. And that's why it was separately put in those accounts, so that people can see that effort. And the chief does have discretion when to use them. So he has, he makes the determination when they should be used. And he does it quite prudently. I think we have a surplus from last year and did the year before. So he's very careful about it. If it's pouring rain out and bad weather, we don't put the walking patrols out there. I would just say to Lucian, he's here, the council was good enough to adopt or amend at the end of last year, the policy allowing for the two Veterans Day parades and for the Reefs Across America to utilize our website, our Facebook and our Twitter account. So I would say to him, let us know when those specials are for the Reefs Across America, the one-for-one, and we'll put it up. And so hopefully during the year, people will see that, and maybe they'll get a little more interested in it. So we now can put that up for you. In regard to the warming centers, basically what had occurred, Cindy, is that during the budget for nonprofits and others that come forward, you know, presentations were made. The council pretty much kept level funding. So anybody who, you know, we didn't proactively call them, they didn't get the funding. So I, you know, I don't know what to say more than that. If they can come back this year again, but they have to do it through the budget process. And in regard to grant writing, we don't do grant writing for private groups. I mean, basically, you know, we don't have a grant writer, and we have Development Services that does it. We have worked in concert with quasi-government, you know, I guess I'd say, agencies. Nelson Tericio was successful in getting the $350,000 grant with the Enfield Housing Authority. He's working on the Opera House Players, because we own that property. He worked with Hazardville Institute for a $100,000 grant. We've worked with the Historical Society. So if they're quasi-governmental, and we have an actual interest in it, we tend to help direct them. But I will ask Mr. Nelson Tericio to look, and if he sees any grants, he can certainly direct them to them and bring it to their attention. And in regard, I would just say, Gina, in regard to the joint facilities, we had just checked with Debbie. I know she had looked into that, and she had told me she talked to the other man. I know it was a scheduling issue. She thought it was worked out and accommodated, but...
I have some...
Oh, okay. Well, then you have to maybe tomorrow remind us what it is, because that's the only thing we had on our radar.
All set? Moving on to item 10, Town Attorney Report.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Town Council. I want to take a minute just to go over some of our information in terms of workflow. This is basically refresher information for the Veteran Council members. You might have remembered it during some of the budget presentations. I'll keep it pretty brief, but since you're going to be transitioning to a new town attorney, I think it's important for you to just know kind of how our workflow has been and about what the numbers are right now in terms of issues that we're reviewing. And this will be new information for the new council people. But typically, and this is how the process has been for many, many years, we've refined it, but all work is logged that comes into us from either the town manager or from the council. And we keep a log on requests for review as well as for litigation. So to give you just an idea of the volume of that, well, first of all, in terms of priority, as I've shared with you, typically go with litigation first. Anything that's been court determined, we have to completely comply with. Then the council requests, the manager requests, the manager determines, you know, what the priorities are for us to review, keeping in mind that whenever there's an emergency request, we put that ahead. You know, we're not a slave to first in, first out. That's typically how it's done. But if there's something that's an emergency, that gets looked at. So just in terms of some of the numbers, so that you know, in October, we had 35 requests for review, and that doesn't include any of the litigation that we do. And it's a small, we don't have a lot of cases, but those cases are not included here. In the last, in November, we had 30. So that's 65 within the last two months, not including December. And then in terms of the prior quarters, not including contracts, in the July to September, that three-month period, we had 79 requests. So it's just, just to let you know what kind of volume goes through that office. There is a fair amount. One of the things that we're looking at right now, and I regret that it's not completely finished, because I did represent to you that we had a model ordinance that was given to us with solid waste, with suggestions from the subcommittee and staff. It's almost done. It's going to be half the size. So what I want you to know is, the reason that it's been whittled down so much, I think that while it's important to keep the public apprised of what they're going to need to do, that's handled better through education and through some of these special guests that the town manager has. I never recommend, and it's never been recommended, that the council overburden the ordinance with information. Because remember, when we went through property maintenance last year, and actually, that started almost two years ago, there were a lot of changes made. Because once something's in the ordinance, if you want to change it, you have to get involved with a public hearing. It's a big production. And you're bound by these things that you don't need to be bound by. If you want to be able to change whatever requirements there are around bulky waste, yard waste, grass waste, the tipper barrels, the charge, the days of collection, the times of year of collection, those aren't things that you're going to want in the ordinance. You want to have some flexibility. So whether that's entirely council policy, or you've delegated that to the director, those are things that the public will be able to maybe click on something on the public works website and see exactly what's required of them. So it's been skinny down quite a bit. We've met with the director for, it was a total of three hours over last week, and we're going to meet again tomorrow, hoping to just polish it up and have the new draft go to the subcommittee. So it will be changed a lot, but I think that ultimately, it'll be something that's more workable for the town and for the council. And lastly, thanks very much. It was great working with you. And since this will be my last night, I appreciate it.
Counsel Bosco.
First off, you'll be missed. Second off, as you're whittling away this, are you starting to give us a list so we can do a procedure page or vote on...
For solid waste?
Yes.
Yeah. I think that that will be with the director. So yeah, there's all the things that we're deleting. We're deleting from the ordinance, but not from the process. So they've been all separated in terms of those areas I just discussed that you're not going to want in the ordinance. So yeah, they're there. They're safe.
Okay, good. Because what I'd like to do is, if we do this, be able to vote on an ordinance and a procedure at the same time, if possible. You know, and then if it needs to be changed, then we can change it as we go. But I just hate to do the ordinance and not have the procedures all taken care of at the same time. I like to button up all the loose ends. Even if it takes a little bit longer, just try to get it right the first time and then adapt after that.
Anyone else have any questions for the Town Attorney? Thank you. Moving on to item 11, report a special committee. Any reports for the special committees? None? Counsel Engier?
I'd like to report on the Commission on Aging. We had, we met last week. They have their senior repair program. This past year, they helped 159 residents with different little jobs that they needed. They're also looking for two qualified people to volunteer to help. It's on Tuesday mornings, and they usually do about eight jobs every Tuesday. So if you'd like to help out with that, you can contact the Commission on Aging. Also, they have the Isolated Seniors Calling Program. They have volunteers that call isolated seniors once a week, check in on them, ask them how they're doing. And if you'd like to volunteer for that, the same thing. They also have a project called Nursing Home Project. Alice Egan, she had bought and bagged and wrapped up really nicely a bunch of gifts to distribute to Parkway Pavilion and St. Joseph's residents. And these are seniors that have no one that come to visit them over the holidays. So it's really a nice gesture that she does. And this is her sixth year of taking on this project. So kudos to her.
Anyone else? Okay, moving on to item...
I just wanted to bring up joint facilities. We have a Facebook page now, and we're posting a lot of updates on it. It's the Enfield Facilities Committee. So I would definitely like that page or follow it. We'll put a lot of updates there. And we're going through a lot of roof planning and staging and other buildings, just to make sure everybody's on a rotating schedule. So we're all working on that.
Okay. Moving on to item 12, old business. Page one, appointments A1 and 2 stay on the table. Moving up to page two, under old business, 3, 4, and 5 stay on the table. Do I have a motion to remove number 6, the Ethics Committee by Counsel Sikala? By Counsel Mueller. All those in favor are moved from the table. By a show of hands. Opposed, abstentions? Do I have, it's 10 in favor, zero against. Do I have a nomination? Please.
Please.
Counsel Sikala?
I'd like to nominate Jen Bukowski for Ethics.
Nomination made. Do I have a second? Second by Counselor Sven Mangini. Do I have a nomination to close nomination, a motion to close nomination by Counsel Mueller? Second by Counselor Riley. All those in favor of closing nominations by a show of hands. Opposed, abstentions? It's 10 in favor, zero against. Any conversation on the main motion? Hearing a non-roll call, please.
Counselor Sikala.
Jen Bukowski.
Counselor Keiner.
Bukowski.
Mayor Ludwig.
Four.
Counselor Mangini.
Jen Bukowski.
Counselor Mueller.
Four.
Counselor Riley.
Four.
Counselor Sforza.
Four.
Deputy Mayor Suzak.
Um, present.
Counselor Engier.
Four.
Counselor Bosco.
Four.
Here's nine in favor. None against, no abstentions.
Moving on to item 70, Ethics Mission. Do I have a motion to remove from the table?
So moved.
By Counsel Mueller, second by Counsel Riley. All those in favor, by a show of hands, are removing from the table? Opposed, abstentions? 10 in favor, zero against. Do I have a nomination? Someone? Hey. Joe, Lori?
It's Eric.
Ellery. Someone make a nomination.
Elizabeth Ellery.
I can.
Ellery, yeah.
Second.
By Counsel, Counselor Sikala. Do I have a motion to close nominations?
So moved.
Counsel Mueller. Do I have a second?
Second.
By Counselor Sikala. All those in favor of closing nominations by a show of hands? Opposed, abstentions? Any discussion on the main motion? Hearing a non-roll call, please.
Counselor Sikala.
Elizabeth Ellery.
Counselor Keiner.
Four.
Mayor Ludwig.
Four.
Counselor Mangini.
Elizabeth Ellery.
Counselor Mueller.
Four.
Counselor Riley.
Four.
Counselor Sforza.
Four.
Deputy Mayor Suzak.
Present.
Counselor Engier.
Four.
Counselor Bosco.
Four.
Here's nine in favor, none against, no abstentions.
Items 8 through 16 on page 2, stay on the table. Moving up to page 3, on top, items 17 and 18 remain on the table. Under B, appointments, town manager or council approved. Items 1 through 12 on page 3, none. Moving up to the top of page 4, under town manager appointments, items 13 through 17, none. Moving on to under old business, C, appointments, P&amp;Z Commission appointed, council approved, there are none. Item D, discussion, school roof replacements, assuming it stays on the table. Moving into item 13, new business. Item A, consent agenda. Item 1, request for funds for youth and family services, which is the grant for, sorry, let me get my paperwork. Field trip, right? Yeah. Field trip to help, to discuss or prevent underage drinking. Sorry, I'm getting my, I apologize. Underage drinking stipend of 750, again, prevent underage drinking. Correct. Any discussion? If we do this by a show of hands, all those in favor of the consent agenda by a show of hands. Abstentions against? 10 in favor, zero against? Moving on to new business, item B, item 1 stays on the table. Item 2 stays on the table. Do I have a motion to a nominee for number 3?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Dane Thorogood.
Is nominated for planning and zoning alternate.
Second.
By Counselor, motion by Counsel Mueller, second by Counselor Sforza. Do I have a motion to close nominations?
So moved.
By Counselor Mueller.
Second.
Second by Counselor Riley. All those in favor of closing nominations by a show of hands? Abstentions? Ten in favor, zero against? Any discussion on the main motion? Hearing non-roll call, please.
Counselor Sikala.
Dane Thoroughgood.
Counselor Kiner.
Yes.
Mayor Ludwig.
Four.
Counselor Mancini.
Dane Thoroughgood.
Counselor Mueller.
Four.
Counselor Riley.
Four.
Counselor Sforazo.
Four.
Deputy Mayor Suzak.
Dane Thoroughgood.
Counselor Ungary.
Four.
Counselor Bosco.
Four.
Here's ten in favor, none against, no abstentions.
Item C, under New Business, Town Manager appointed, Council approved, there are none. Item D, again, P and Z Commission appointed, Council approved, there are none. Item fourteen, items for discussion, A, consent agenda, there are none. B one, B one through six been moved to miscellaneous. Seven stays on the table, eight stays on, eight stays on the table, nine stays on the table. Ten's been moved to miscellaneous. Eleven stays on the table. B twelve been moved to miscellaneous. Thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, and sixteen been moved to miscellaneous. B seventeen's been moved to miscellaneous. B eighteen and B nineteen, B twenty stays on the table. C, appointments, Town Manager appointed, Council approved, there are none. Item D, appointments, P and Z Commission appointed, Council approved, there are none. E and F been moved to miscellaneous. Now, as we move to miscellaneous, item B one, Board of Assessment Appeals, term of Donna Dubinowski is up. Do I have a nomination?
Yes.
Counselor Mueller.
Donna Dubinowski.
Then, second, motion made by Counselor Mueller, second by Deputy Mayor Suzak.
Move to close nomination.
Move to close nomination by Deputy Mayor Suzak, second by Counselor Mueller. All those in favor, by a show of hands, are closing nominations? Ten in favor, zero against, no abstentions? Any discussion on the main motion? Hearing non-roll call, please.
Counselor Sikala.
Donna Dubinowski.
Counselor Kiner.
Dubinowski.
Mayor Ludwig.
Four.
Counselor Mancini.
Donna Dubinowski.
Counselor Mueller.
Four.
Counselor Riley.
Four.
Counselor Sforazo.
Four.
Deputy Mayor Suzak.
Donna Dubinowski.
Counselor Ungary.
Four.
Counselor Bosco.
Four.
Here's ten in favor, none against, no abstentions.
Moving to item B two, the Board of Education vacancy due to resignation of Tim Neville. Do I have a nomination?
Yes.
Counselor Sikala?
I proudly and happily nominate Stacy Thurston.
Nomination?
Second.
By Counselor Sikala, second by Deputy Mayor Suzak. Do I have a motion to close nominations? By Counselor Sforazo, second by Deputy Mayor Suzak. All those in favor of closing nominations by a show of hands? Abstentions against, ten in favor, zero against? Any discussion on the main motion? Hearing non-roll call, please.
Counselor Sikala.
Stacy Thurston.
Counselor Kiner.
Thurston.
Mayor Ludwig.
Four.
Counselor Mancini.
Stacy Thurston.
Counselor Mueller.
Four.
Counselor Riley.
Stacy Thurston.
Counselor Sforazo.
Four.
Deputy Mayor Suzak.
Stacy Thurston.
Counselor Ungary.
Stacy Thurston.
Counselor Bosco.
Four.
Here's ten in favor, none against, no abstentions.
Moving on to miscellaneous, item B three, Commission on Aging. The term of Alice Egan is up. Do I have a nomination? You gotta make a nomination.
Yes.
Alice Egan.
Nomination made by Counselor Ungar, second by Counselor Mueller. Someone enclose nominations by Deputy Mayor Suzak, second by Counselor Riley. All those in favor of closing nominations by a show of hands? Ten in favor, zero against, no abstentions? Any discussion on the main motion? Hearing non-roll call, please.
Counselor Sikala.
Alice Egan.
Counselor Kiner.
Alice Egan.
Mayor Ludwig.
Four.
Counselor Mancini.
Alice Egan.
Counselor Mueller.
Four.
Counselor Riley.
Four.
Counselor Sforazo.
Four.
Deputy Mayor Suzak.
Alice Egan.
Counselor Ungary.
Alice Egan.
Counselor Bosco.
Four.
Here's ten in favor, none against, no abstentions.
Moving under miscellaneous, item B four, Commission on Aging, term of William St. George is expired. Do I have a nomination?
I nominate William St. George.
Second.
Nomination by Counselor Riley for William St. George, second by Counselor Sforazo. Do I have a motion by Counselor Mueller to close nominations? By Counselor Ungar? All those in favor of closing nominations by a show of hands? Against abstentions, ten in favor, zero against, the close nominations? Do I have any discussion on the main motion? Hearing non-roll call, please.
Counselor Sikala.
William St. George.
Counselor Kiner.
William St. George.
Mayor Ludwig.
Four.
Counselor Mancini.
William St. George.
Counselor Mueller.
Four.
Counselor Riley.
Four.
Counselor Sforazo.
Four.
Deputy Mayor Suzak.
William St. George.
Counselor Ungary.
Four.
Counselor Bosco.
Four.
Here's ten in favor, none against, no abstentions.
Under miscellaneous, item B five, Commission on Aging, the term of Howard Florian is expired. Do I have a nomination?
Yes.
Howard Florian.
By Counselor Mueller.
Second.
By Counselor Riley. Their motion to close nominations?
So moved.
By Deputy Mayor Suzak.
Second.
By Counselor Mueller. All those in favor of closing nominations by a show of hands? Ten in favor, zero against, no abstentions? Any discussion on the main motion? Hearing non-roll call, please.
Counselor Sikala.
Howard Florian.
Counselor Kiner.
Howard Florian.
Mayor Ludwig.
Four.
Counselor Mancini.
Howard Florian.
Counselor Mueller.
Four.
Counselor Riley.
Four.
Counselor Sforazo.
Four.
Deputy Mayor Suzak.
Howard Florian.
Counselor Ungary.
Four.
Counselor Bosco.
Four.
Here's ten in favor, none against, no abstentions.
Under miscellaneous, item B six, Enfield Beautification Committee, the Office of Cath, the term of Kathleen Flanagan is up. Do I have a nomination, please?
Yes.
Counselor Sikala?
Please, I nominate Jacob Nato to the Beautification Committee.
Second.
Motion made by Counselor Sikala, second by Counselor Sutmane Gini. Do I have a motion to close nominations? By Counselor Mueller.
Second.
By Counselor Riley. All those in favor of closing nominations by a show of hands? Abstentions against, ten in favor, zero against? Any discussion on the main motion? Hearing non-roll call, please.
Counselor Sikala.
Jacob Nato.
Counselor Kiner.
Jacob Nato.
Mayor Ludwig.
Four.
Counselor Mancini.
Jacob Nato.
Counselor Mueller.
Four.
Counselor Riley.
Four.
Counselor Sforazo.
Four.
Deputy Mayor Suzak.
Jacob Nato.
Counselor Ungary.
Four.
Counselor Bosco.
Four.
Here's ten in favor, none against, no abstentions.
Nine, again, we move on to item ten, Loan Review Committee, the term of Paul Coffey has expired. Do I have a nomination?
Yes.
By Counselor Mueller.
Second.
By Counselor Riley. Is there a motion?
To close.
By Counselor Mueller.
Second.
Second by Counselor Riley. All those in favor of closing nominations by a show of hands? Against abstentions, ten in favor, zero against? Any discussion on the main motion? Hearing non-roll call, please.
Counselor Sikala.
Paul Coffey.
Counselor Kiner.
Four.
Mayor Ludwig.
Four.
Counselor Mancini.
Paul Coffey.
Counselor Mueller.
Four.
Counselor Riley.
Four.
Counselor Sforazo.
Four.
Deputy Mayor Suzak.
Paul Coffey.
Counselor Ungary.
Four.
Counselor Bosco.
Four.
Here's ten in favor, none against, and no abstentions.
Moving on to item twelve, Planning and Zoning Commission, term of Mary Scott. Do I have a nomination?
Yes.
I'd like to bring forward the name of a person who served many years, over nineteen years, on this committee, who is well-versed and would serve the town very well in the capacity. I'd like to bring forward Anthony De Pace.
Motion made?
Second.
Second by Counselor Kiner. Do I have any other nominees? Deputy Mayor Suzak?
I'd like to nominate Mary Scott.
Nomination made?
Second.
By Counselor Riley. Do I have any other nominees? Do I have a motion to close nominations?
So moved.
Counselor Mueller?
Second.
Second by Deputy Mayor Suzak. All those in favor of closing nominations by a show of hands? Abstentions, ten in favor, zero against? Any discussion on the main motion? Hearing non-roll call, please.
Counselor Sikala. Counselor Kiner.
Good.
Mayor Ludwig.
Mary Scott.
Counselor Mancini.
Anthony De Pace.
Counselor Mueller.
Mary Scott.
Counselor Riley.
Mary Scott.
Counselor Sforazo.
Tony De Pace.
Deputy Mayor Suzak.
Mary Scott.
Counselor Ungary.
Mary Scott.
Counselor Bosco.
Tony De Pace.
We have five for Scott.
Motion fails.
Yes.
Moving on to item thirteen, Planning and Zoning Commission, term of Nick LaFacer, Fakers. Do I have a nomination?
Yes.
Counselor Mueller.
Frank Alamo.
Frank Alamo, do I have a second?
Second.
By Counselor Riley. Do I have a motion?
Close nominations?
By Counselor Mueller.
Second.
By Counselor Riley. All those in favor of closing nominations by a show of hands? Abstentions, deletions, sorry, I mean, abstentions? Further discussion? Roll call, please.
Counselor Sikala.
Against.
Counselor Kiner.
Four.
Mayor Ludwig.
Four.
Counselor Mancini.
Four.
Counselor Mueller.
Four.
Counselor Riley.
Four.
Counselor Sforazo.
Four.
Deputy Mayor Suzak.
Four.
Counselor Ungary.
Four.
Counselor Bosco.
Four.
We have nine in favor, one against, no abstentions.
Moving on to item fourteen, Planning and Zoning Commission, the term of Charlie Dorn is up. Do I have a nominee?
Yes. Linda De Gray.
Linda De Gray, do I have a second?
Second.
By Counselor Riley.
Motion to close.
By Counselor Mueller.
Second.
By Counselor Riley. All those in favor, by a show of hands, are closing nominations? Abstentions against, ten in favor, zero against? Main motion, any discussion? Hearing non-roll call, please.
Counselor Sikala.
Against.
Counselor Kiner.
Four.
Mayor Ludwig.
Four.
Counselor Mancini.
Linda De Gray.
Counselor Mueller.
Four.
Counselor Riley.
Four.
Counselor Sforazo.
Four.
Deputy Mayor Suzak.
Linda De Gray.
Counselor Ungary.
Four.
Counselor Bosco.
Four.
Here's nine in favor, one against, no abstentions.
Moving on to item fifteen, Planning and Zoning Commission, the term of Jenny Higley is up. Do I have a nomination?
Yes, if I may?
I'd like to reappoint a person who has served the commission quite well and continues to do so. And I would like to bring forward the name of Virginia Higley for nomination.
Nomination made? By Councilor, nomination by Councilor Mangini, second by Councilor Sacala.
Motion to close?
Motion to close by Councilor Mueller, second by Councilor?
Rysko?
Second by Councilor Deputy Mayor Suzak, all those in favor, closing nominations, by show of hands? Abstentions, any discussion on the main motion? Roll call, please.
Councilor Sacala?
Ginny Higley.
Councilor Kiner? Mayor Ludwig?
Four.
Councilor Mangini?
Virginia Higley.
Councilor Mueller?
Four.
Councilor Riley?
Four.
Councilor Sforazza?
Four.
Deputy Mayor Suzak?
Virginia Higley.
Councilor Ungeyer?
Four.
Councilor Bosco?
Four.
Is ten in favor, none against, no abstentions?
Moving on to item sixteen, Planning and Zoning Commission, alternate, term of Linda DeGray, do I have a nomination?
Vinnie Grillo?
Vinnie Grillo, do I have a second?
Second.
By Councilor Riley. Motion to close?
So moved.
By Councilor Mueller?
Second.
By Councilor Mangini, all those, by show of hands, all those in favor? Against abstentions, ten in favor, zero against, any discussion on the main motion? Roll call, please.
Councilor Sacala?
Four.
Councilor Kiner? Mayor Ludwig?
Four.
Councilor Mangini?
Vinnie Grillo.
Councilor Mueller?
Four.
Councilor Riley?
Four.
Councilor Sforazza?
Four.
Deputy Mayor Suzak?
Vinnie Grillo.
Councilor Ungeyer?
Four.
Councilor Bosco?
Four.
Is ten in favor, none against, no abstentions?
Moving on to item seventeen, Zoning Board of Appeals, alternate, Robert Quaznicki, his term is up, do I have a nomination?
Yes, Robert Quaznicki.
Motion made by Councilor Mueller?
Second.
By Councilor Sforazza? Do I have a motion to close nominations?
A motion.
By Councilor Mueller, second by Councilor Ungeyer, all those in favor, closing nominations, by show of hands? Against abstentions, ten in favors, zero against? Any discussion on the main motion, hearing on roll call, please.
Councilor Sacala?
Robert Quaznicki.
Councilor Kiner?
Four.
Mayor Ludwig?
Four.
Councilor Mangini?
Robert Quaznicki.
Councilor Mueller?
Four.
Councilor Riley?
Four.
Councilor Sforazza?
Four.
Deputy Mayor Suzak?
Robert Quaznicki.
Councilor Ungeyer?
Four.
Councilor Bosco?
Four.
Is ten in favor, none against, no abstentions?
Moving on to item eighteen, Zoning Board of Appeals, the term of Kelly Davis is up, do I have a nomination, please?
Yes.
For Councilor Mangini?
Yes, thank you, I would like to bring forward the name of Kelly Davis for reappointment, she's served well, thank you.
Reappointment by Councilor Mangini? Second?
Second.
By Councilor Sacala? Do I have a motion to close nominations? By Councilor Mueller?
Second.
Second by Councilor Riley, all those in favor, closing nominations, by show of hands? Ten in favors, zero against, no abstentions, any discussion on the main motion? Hearing on roll call, please.
Councilor Sacala?
Kelly Davis.
Councilor Kiner?
Four.
Mayor Ludwig?
Four.
Councilor Mangini?
Kelly Davis.
Councilor Mueller?
Four.
Councilor Riley?
Four.
Councilor Sforazza?
Four.
Deputy Mayor Suzak?
Kelly Davis.
Councilor Ungeyer?
Four.
Councilor Bosco?
Four.
Is ten in favor, none against, no abstentions?
Moving on to item nineteen, B-19, Zoning Board of Appeals, the term of Mary Ann Turner is up, do I have a nomination?
Yes, Mary Ann Turner.
Councilor Mueller?
Second.
By Councilor Riley. Do I have a motion to close nominations?
So moved.
By Councilor Mueller?
Second.
Second by Councilor Riley, all those in favor, closing nominations, by show of hands? Abstentions against, ten in favors, zero against, any discussion on the main motion? Hearing on roll call, please.
Councilor Sacala?
Against.
Councilor Kiner? Mayor Ludwig?
Four.
Oh, Councilor Mangini?
Mary Ann Turner.
Councilor Mueller?
Four.
Councilor Riley?
Mary Ann Turner.
Councilor Sforazza?
Four.
Deputy Mayor Suzak?
Mary Ann Turner.
Councilor Ungeyer?
Four.
Councilor Bosco? Is ten in favor, none against, no abstentions?
Item twenty, against days on miscellaneous, moving on to item E, Discussion Resolution. Resolution waiving the bid requirements for nursing services at adult daycare. Whereas Connecticut Association of Adult Daycare Center Certification requires nursing service for at least fifty percent of the hours during which a medical model adult center is open and a search for an adult service, and the search for an adult services program manager has not been successful, whereas currently nursing services have been being provided a per diem basis by released nurses, relief nurses and contracted services, whereas there is immediate need to implement these services in order to continue to provide services to the adult day center, and whereas the Caring Solutions LLC is recommended by a Director of Social Services as prepared commence work immediately, now being resolved according to Chapter Five, Section Eight, Paragraph D of the Town Charter, Enfield Town Charter. The Enfield Town Council does hereby determine that it is against the best interest of the town to require competitive bidding for nursing services at adult day submitted on November twenty seventh, two thousand and nineteen by the Town Manager's Office.
So moved.
Councilor Mueller? Second by Councilor Riley. Chris, I don't know if there's anything you want to open up, or?
Well, basically, consistent with our certification requirements, to be a medical adult daycare center, we have to have nursing staff on fifty percent of the time. Since the last director who also served in that capacity had left, we've been doing it per diem with this same provider, Caring Solutions, they've agreed, and it just is more consistent to choose them and have them do it on, you know, a basis so they know they have it for the next three months or whatever you decide, instead of doing it from day to day. That's all.
Any discussion, Councilor Mangini, then Councilor Kiner?
I just want to get clarification. By voting on this resolution, we are authorizing or supporting, designating funding for the nursing services, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, I do not want it understood under any circumstances, excuse me, that I support closing the adult daycare, because I do not. And if there is a resolution in here somewhere to close the facility, I will be voting no, but I want to make certain that I'm not voting no on the incorrect resolution.
Correct, this is simply to waive the bid requirement and choose this because they've done it, it's a limited number of people, it's in our best interest to keep them, they're familiar with the facility, and they're willing to do it, and in no way, the next resolution will address your concern.
All right, thank you.
Councilor Kiner?
Yeah, I think the Town Manager, sorry about that. I think the Town Manager answered my question, I just wanted to make sure that we're just voting on the thirty-four thousand dollars for the nursing services, and that is not the resolution that also would close adult daycare.
That is correct.
It's a separate resolution, thank you.
Yes.
That's why I was a little bit, Bill, that's why I was, when you asked me the question, right?
Yeah.
You okay? Sorry, you okay?
Well, now I'm confused now. Are we voting on the resolution?
We're doing, no, we're just the bid.
All we're voting on is the thirty-four thousand dollars.
Correct, this is just to waive the bid requirement.
Waive the bid.
Okay, but there will be a resolution following this?
Correct.
That will have two items in it?
Yes.
Both the closure and the thirty-four thousand dollars, thank you very much, I appreciate that, thank you.
Make sure you're clear, that's all. Anyone else? Hearing on roll call, please.
Councilor Sacala?
Four.
Councilor Kiner?
Four.
Mayor Ludwig?
Four.
Councilor Mangini?
Four.
Councilor Mueller?
Four.
Councilor Riley?
Four.
Councilor Sforazza?
Four.
Deputy Mayor Suzak?
Four.
Councilor Ungeyer?
Four.
Councilor Bosco?
Four.
Is ten in favor, none against, no abstentions?
Moving on to item F, under miscellaneous, resolution to close the Adult Day Center and fund through March two thousand and twenty, March two thousand and twenty, thirty-four thousand. Whereas the Town Council determined the Adult Day Center to not operate after March thirty first, two thousand and twenty, and funds are needed to provide nursing services through March thirty first, two thousand and twenty. Resolving according to Chapter Six, Section Eight F of the Town Charter, the following transfers hereby made. To adult day from other professional services of thirty-four thousand, from salaries of adult day of thirty-four thousand dollars. Certification that the above funds are available on December twelfth, two thousand and nineteen by John Wilcox, approved by Chris Bronson on twelve, on twelve, twelve, two thousand and nineteen. By Councilor Mueller?
By Councilor Riley.
So do I, anything you want to bring John up, or?
No, this, you know, the initial staff had brought forward the resolution last week for six months to the end of fiscal year, which would have been double this, I guess it was, well, it was this plus asking for Caring Solutions to do some marketing and also fulfill the role of Director. But after leadership, the request was made that it be just for the nursing services to fund the adult daycare through March thirty first only and close it. Therefore, we withdrew the part for marketing or Director to keep it, you know, slim, because we knew those other services wouldn't be needed, so that's when we brought forth and we amended it, and here we are.
Any questions?
Yes, thank you, I just wanted again to reiterate, I'm very disturbed by this, you know, to echo our wonderful employees and guests. This is a program, a facility, I know I go back, what, nineteen years, visiting and supporting and enjoying and understanding and learning how important it is for our town to have such a facility available to our citizens who really built the town. And I just cannot with a good conscience support this, and I'm very sad by it, thank you.
Anyone any further discussion, Councilor Bosco?
This is probably one of the toughest things I had to do during the council, my twelve years. Of course, I'm going to yell that by Gina, but I, six years or seven years ago, we went through the same thing, and I, you know, I was the one that came up and I spoke very highly and saved it. The problem was, it was a mistake. I believe we're running, what, a hundred and fifty thousand dollar deficit right now?
That's the projection, basically, the budgeted amount for the daycare in this budget that you approved is two hundred and forty-nine thousand dollars and change. We're about at the halfway mark, we've generated in revenue about forty-nine thousand, the projection is we will generate the same, which would bring in revenue of a hundred. The cost of the budget is two fifty, so yes, the deficit would be about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
And that doesn't include the hundred and twenty-five, we already put four to it last year, right? So we're going to, that's going to be three hundred, or two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars a town taxpayers' funds to run this program. And, and the problem is, even at the two seventy-five, that, that's the low end of it, because we're going to still have to do all the work to the building. And, and other things, and it's just, it's just, the numbers just don't work. Now, what we did discuss is, there's a couple other daycares, we want to put a fund together on a sliding scale. This way, if someone's parent who can't afford to go, we will cover a part of their, their daycare. And it's just, it's not working, and it's absolutely killing me, but it's the thing we have to do.
Councilor Sacala?
Thanks. And Joey, yes, I appreciate that, six years ago you did save it, or eight years ago, or whenever it was. Well, nobody's surprised. Again, nobody's going to be surprised by me not being in support of this, I kind of wish that Ray was still here, because in his comments, he said, you know, things are black and white, and I disagree with that, because I think there are certain issues and, that aren't black and white, and sometimes money isn't the driving factor, and I don't think this should be one of them, and it sucks. So, I want to explain my vote, this resolution has two parts. It is closing the daycare center, but funding it until the closing date. I don't want the daycare closed, but obviously, I want them to fund it until they do close it, until March. I'm voting no, but obviously, I want them to stay open until March. For all you people who vote, remember this in two years, and then tell all your friends, and make sure they tell all their friends, because this is what happens.
Mr. Mayor, thank you. I'd make, for clarification's sake, after we vote on this resolution, there will be a next, another resolution, is that right? Or this is the, this is the final resolution?
The money, the money will be out.
That funds the, that closes daycare?
Right.
And funds the thirty, funds thirty-four thousand dollars. What I would like to do, and I spoke to you earlier about this, is divide the question. I think we can do that by Robert's Rules of Order. Quite candidly, if the two issues can stand alone, they can be taken up separately. As Councilwoman Mangini and Sacala have said, we can support the thirty-four thousand dollars. We cannot support, I cannot support, I don't think these two ladies indicated the same thing, neither can they support the closure of the adult daycare. So as such, I would like to make a motion that we divide the question into two separate entities. One entity would be the, the certification, and the other would be the closure of adult daycare.
Suzanne, is that doable?
Does that give you a second?
No, you want me to? I think it's, I think it's permissible, but I'm not a parliamentarian, so.
We know we can amend the resolution, but what he wants to do is break the resolution into two parts. So, that was the question, and I think what he wants to do is, one, to close it, and then a separate resolution to fund it from now until March, the thirty-four thousand dollars. I mean, I'll second it?
So just want to make sure, though, so this will be a separate, do we, do we have to add anything from a, do we have to add, so he made, do we have to actually make a motion to add? Right? All right, so does, do you have, someone have a resolution, right, I need in writing? Or can we use the current one and split it? In the past, we had to actually write a separate resolution, right?
Well, if you're going to do this, you need two resolutions, it's always difficult when, you know, the clerk and the town attorney are unsure as how to proceed. I think it's very clear the three general people don't support the closing, and they'd like to vote to continue the funding, I think that's been articulated, so if you leave it as one resolution, I mean, I know they'll have to vote against it, but it's clear that they have always been against closing it, but they would like to fund it. I mean, you have to have something to read, you need a resolution, so Gina's an attorney, perhaps you can break it down, Gina, and just say, break into the following two, one, the, I think first you should fund the nursing, say that we, the resolution?
So Resolution A is to fund the thirty-four thousand dollars?
Is to fund thirty-four thousand dollars for nursing solutions through March thirty first, that's Resolution One. Resolution Two, we are voting to close the Enfield Adult Daycare Center as of March thirty first, twenty twenty, and that would be the second.
May for, April first, right?
March thirty.
March thirty first.
So do you have that?
Right, but I'm saying you have to have.
That's exactly what we want to do.
So you had a motion, you had a second, now we need it, we have to write, physically write it, don't we? All right, okay, got it. So, so, okay, you made the motion, right? You second it, any discussion on the motion to separate the question? Any discussion? Any questions? So I think we do roll call on this, right? You do a show of hands, by show of hands, are those who'd like to separate the question, by raise your hand? Opposed, abstentions? Yeah, all those in favor, raise your hand? Of separating the question? Those opposed? So we have ten people, seven and three.
Seven and three, so it gets separated.
It was four, seven and three.
It was four.
So now the first amendment for the thirty-four, this first resolution to fund the thirty-four thousand, I need a motion to approve? By Councilor Sacala? Second by Councilor Bosco, any discussion? By show of hand, oh, excuse me? Roll call, please.
Councilor Sacala?
Four.
Councilor Kiner?
Four.
Mayor Ludwig?
Four.
Councilor Mangini?
Four.
Councilor Mueller?
Four.
Councilor Riley?
Four.
Councilor Sforazza?
Four.
Deputy Mayor Suzak?
Four.
Councilor Bosco?
Four.
Is ten in favor, none against, no abstentions?
Second motion, resolution to close on March thirty first, two thousand and twenty, do I have a motion to approve? So moved, by Council Mueller? By Council Riley, any discussion on the motion? Council Kiner?
You know, I guess the first law of politics is you got to know how to count, and I know where the votes are, quite obviously, we all do. But I think the vote we're about to take tonight really transcends politics. We're dealing with, with human lives, we're dealing with families, and particular individuals who are going to be severely impacted by the closure of Enfield Adult Daycare. You know, I'm reminded of what happened with Blair Manor, and my, I've got to say that the council last year did whatever you could to keep Blair Manor open. Obviously, it wasn't. And something that's often referred to as transfer trauma occurred, where a number of residents at Blair Manor who were transferred out of there died soon thereafter. Now, I'm not suggesting that's going to happen with the closure of adult daycare, but the negative impact upon families is insurmountable. You know, one of my neighbors' husband is a patient, is a client at adult daycare. And what I've heard from his wife and from staff is that this man thrives at adult daycare. At Enfield Adult Daycare, and he's going to be deprived of that in the near future. I am reading, I'd like to read something to you, this is from the, the project activities report in our agenda. And it says there are currently thirteen client participants at the Adult Daycare Center with an average daily census of nine. The November activity schedule included live piano music and singing several times a week, and the new favorite entertainment by the old-time fiddlers. Mark Twain residents join clients and their families for a movie on the ADC big screen on November twenty first. A dedicated Enfield High School student is now volunteering each afternoon for two hours. Wednesday trips to the senior center for lunch and bingo are enjoyed immensely. Clients and their families celebrate Thanksgiving with staff volunteers on Monday, November fifth. To me, ladies and gentlemen, this sounds like a thriving organization. Pretty vibrant organization to me. I am asking the other side of the aisle to open up your hearts during this Christmas season, and maybe give this facility the one more chance than I believe it deserves. You know, we've gone through a couple of social services directors over the past year, and to my knowledge, nothing was really done to improve the facility. Grants were not sought after. I mean, I remember asking one of the social services directors, what, if any, things was done to market adult daycare. I'd got no response. A number of years ago, I believe it was a year or two ago, and if I'm wrong, I'm sure I'll be corrected. One of the former social services directors was told, do not seek any grants for adult daycare, because we're shutting it down anyhow, even though money might be available. There was twenty-five thousand dollars left in lapsed funds that was supposed to go to adult daycare. It never made it to adult daycare. I really don't believe that we gave adult daycare what it needed to survive, and shame on us for that. And let me just close by saying, this is one last thing. I had a picture hanging in my office in the state legislature a number of years ago. And when I retired, I took that, that frame and the saying on that frame home with me. And I'd just like to read this to you, and I'll close with that comment. "The moral test of government is how it treats those who are in the dawn of their life. The children, those who are in the twilight of life, and the aged, and those who are in the shadows of life, the sick, the needy, and the handicapped." I think we're letting those people down, ladies and gentlemen, if we were to vote to shut adult daycare, and I really hope, again, as I said in my earlier remarks, the writing is on the wall. I know how to count. But I really hope that we look at this a second time, and perhaps say, well, you know, maybe we could have done more to help keep adult daycare open. We're dealing with anywhere from eight to thirteen lives that are going to be impacted by this closure. And it's sad, it is really sad that this is happening, and all I can say is, I really hope that during this, this holiday season, we do open up our hearts to what I believe is the right thing to do. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
Councilor Sforazza?
So, I want to explain my vote, and why I'm making this vote, and before I start, I want to say, in all seriousness, that I agree with some of the comments that Councilor Kiner and Councilor Sacala said. This isn't black and white, this is going to impact human lives, and for me, the adult daycare and the people in it are the most important thing. It's not about, and I'm going to talk about some numbers in a minute, but I don't just discount numbers and say there's nine clients. These are senior people that need this socialization. The value of adult daycare is not lost on me, I personally have never had to use it for my mom, but I can tell you, I understand what it must mean for these people to go once a day, to socialize, what it means for the caregivers. So it's not a question for me whether or not I understand what adult daycare is, I do. But when we talk about opening our hearts to these nine or ten people, I have to be honest with you, when I was campaigning, I would knock on doors of elderly people, other seniors that don't go to the daycare. They're sixty-five or older, and we have something in this town that I'm so proud that we've been able to maintain, called the Circuit Breaker Program. Simply put, if you're sixty-five years old, your income level is a certain amount, you can apply for tax breaks, anywhere from five hundred to twelve hundred dollars. I had asked previously how many of our citizens avail themselves of this, and I was told hundreds of our seniors are a part of this tax break. And five hundred dollars may not sound like a lot of money, but when you're on social security, on a fixed income, five hundred dollars could be two months of groceries, if it had to be. So, for us to continue, and if my numbers are correct, and I'll tell you now, I'm not sure they're correct, but it looks to me like in two thousand and seventeen, we subsidized the adult daycare to the tune of a hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars. In two thousand and eighteen, we had to kick in another hundred and twenty-six thousand. Last year, it looks like a hundred, and this year we're on track, the number I have is one ninety-four, the manager said one fifty. It's about half a million dollars we've put into that program. Now, this is one of those rare occasions when you can have your cake and eat it too, because by closing this adult daycare, we have not, in my estimation, turned our back on these people. There is a wonderful compassionate alternative for them, there is another daycare in this town. And I don't believe anybody would argue with me that the sisters over at the Felician Sisters are not compassionate people. I understand it's a change for these folks, but they're still going to be able to have daycare. I've said all along, I agree with Councilor Bosco, that the savings we derive for this should not go back into the general fund, it was specified for seniors, and I want to see that money put for seniors. It was specified for seniors, and I want to see that money put for seniors to maintain the Circuit Breaker Program because this should come as no surprise to anybody. The state of Connecticut, I believe it was last year, told the town, "You guys want to do it, it's all on you. We don't have the money." Who would have thought the state was out of money? And right now, the state is looking at, from the Yankee Institute, what I researched today, $100 billion deficit in the pension plan, $100 billion. Now, I don't have inside information, I just read the paper like all of you, but let me tell you what, next March, when the state is hurting for money like they did last, or two years ago, the first thing on the chopping block is municipal aid. And what did they do? They came to towns like Enfield to bail out the city of Hartford for half a million, a billion dollars. They took, I believe it was eight million dollars from our town, and to the credit, not for me, but for the people that sat here, you can get a supplemental tax bill. So even though I don't have a crystal ball, I think that when you're talking $200,000, $150,000, Joey says we have to fix the building for another 200, I think we need to prepare ourselves that we're going to get cut municipal aid next year. And if I'm right, then good, we're in a good position. If I'm wrong, then we have some money that we could allocate for a lot of good purposes, specifically seniors. So this would have been way more difficult for me if the question was, "Close this daycare, and these folks are on their own." That isn't what's going to happen. If the families choose, there's a compassionate place right in town, and I certainly would support subsidizing, like Counselor Bosco said, the difference in whatever it might be. And you know what? I think I said when I got sworn in, "I try to do the most good for the most people," and if money wasn't the issue, we could do both, but we can't. So if I were to support keeping the daycare center open, what would I say to the 200 or 300 seniors that rely on that tax break? What would I say? Would I be opening my heart to 10 seniors and not the rest? And I'm not abandoning these seniors, they've got a place to go. I appreciate the staff that's been there. I know how passionate you are, the care you've given these people, but I got to believe that at the Felician Sisters, they're compassionate too. So for me, the decision to close is predicated on that. Not that there's no value in it, not that, you know, there's only nine people. I never would believe that. I believe they're each valuable, the caretakers are valuable, and I just think by approaching it this way, we're positioning ourselves to help the nine people or 10 people to go to another daycare, and at the same time, taking this money and preparing because frankly, I don't trust what's happening in Hartford. The numbers change every day. We're at a surplus, we're at a deficit. I don't want them to come back here next year and say, "Chee Enfield, we need $5 million, we're going to cut from you." Because you know what? Whether you're Democrat or Republican or Independent, when I knocked on doors this campaign season, the number one issue was, "I'm paying too much tax, and I don't want to have to send supplemental tax bills because I spent money for a program that there's another one that could do." I'm not saying better, but you got to at least say they're as good, and that's why I'm voting to close this. Thank you.
Anyone else? Counsel Riley?
All right, well, I'm not as eloquent as Carl over here, but I never got to say my piece on this vote because I'm brand new, so I just kind of wanted to explain my logic and where I was coming from. Just like Carl said, the people that are in that building are very important to us, and it's definitely a hard decision to have to even put your parents or a loved one in an Adult Daycare Center for the day, or an assisted living facility, or a skilled nursing facility, or even get, like, people to come into your own home like companions and homemakers. So what you guys do over there is a wonderful thing, but, you know, we're operating the facility in the red. I was here for the presentation, I was sitting in the audience back then. I saw the presentation of the Felician Sisters and even Windsor Adult Day. They seem like great places to be. There was a lot of people there, so they were definitely beginning a lot more socialization. They might have different programming, I'm not sure of all the programming things that they have, but Felician Sisters is in town, and I believe they also even offer transportation. So I think the seniors that go to the Adult Day Center would have more meaningful connections and appropriate care over there. Not that they're not receiving that now, but I think that they may have a greater opportunity for more socialization. And if we're going to be assisting in the transition, and we're going to be helping financially, you know, to get them over to the new center, I think that's a really good thing because I think we have to look at the big picture here. I'm not saying that the 13 people that are there don't matter. What I'm saying is, is we have a really large community of seniors that I think that we're underserving and we can really be serving them better. I don't see why we can't take that money that we're going to save and use it towards things that can really ease the burden on a lot of our seniors in town. I work in long-term care. I see the craziness that people have to go through just to get approved for Medicare and Medicaid. It's crazy. You know, Medicare and Medicaid, they tell people what drugs you can take, what chemotherapy you can use, what days you can go see the doctor. It's, and it's a difficult landscape to navigate. So I think what we have to do is take that money and maybe, I don't know, add a staff or two, to Department of Social Services, or get a few college interns to come in and help our seniors handle specific issues that they're navigating, like Medicare and Medicaid, long-term care. Do you even have a plan? A lot of people out there don't even know that they have these plans. They bought them back in the '70s or '80s, and they don't even know they have them or how to even use them or access them. So if we have people there that can help, that would be great. Other things that we could do would be to continue and grow the senior tax credit or the Circuit Breaker Program. I think we need to offer more classes at the senior center on different topics. I think another thing would be to work with local landscapers to maybe negotiate lower costs for fixed income seniors on mowing, or plowing, or shoveling, or even get local handymen on a list to help people that are seniors and can't do that themselves. I just think that we're underutilizing or ineffectively using our budget dollars because our job here is to help the most people the best way that we can, and we do have a large population of seniors in town, and I would like to see more of them be helped out.
Anyone else? Counsel Kiner?
Just one more comment, thank you. Counselor Sforza, we've known each other for, my God, 30 years, maybe longer than that, and I know you to be a very sensitive man, very good man, and respected, and I know you spoke from the heart as I did, but I've got to say that I, there are more important things in life than dollars and cents. There's a human toll that's going to be taken, and I think we have to take that into consideration too. So yeah, it'll cost money for roofs, it'll cost money for whatever, but again, the human toll, I think, is more important for us to look at than the dollars and cents, and that's it. Thank you.
Anyone else? Kiner? Counselor Sforza?
Counselor Kiner, thank you for that because I feel the same way. You're speaking from the heart, I'm speaking from the heart, but you know what? You're right, it's not about dollars and cents, but when these seniors rely on that $500 or $1,000 a year that the state was obligated, not obligated, but paid us, and now they're not doing it anymore, that's heartbreaking too, when they can't afford to buy medicine or food because that $500 or $1,000 was the difference. That would be equally as heartbreaking to me, so I hear what you're saying, and that's how I feel.
Counsel Ungary?
I just want to say it's very unfortunate that we're put in this position that we have to do this. I don't like to close anything, and it's really heartbreaking. I've been to the Enfield Adult Daycare and saw the facilities and the residents there and the work staff, and it was wonderful. I also went on my own to the Felician Sisters and also to the facility in Windsor, and they were great places too. So I feel like we're not leaving these clients on their own. We can help subsidize them. Also, through the Circuit Breaker Program, we can help hundreds of seniors in this town that really need the help versus the few at the daycare, but it's just, it's unfortunate.
No more discussion? Roll call, please.
Counselor Sikala?
Against.
Counselor Kiner?
No.
Mayor Ludwig?
Four.
Counselor Mangini?
Against.
Counselor Mueller?
Four.
Counselor Riley?
Four.
Counselor Sforza?
Four.
Deputy Mayor Suzak?
Four.
Counselor Ungary?
Four.
Counselor Bosco?
Four.
Seven in favor, three against, and no abstentions.
Moving on to Item 16, Public Communications. What time is it? 10 o'clock? Anyone like to speak for the council at this time? Ma'am?
We ask you refrain from personality.
Go ahead, no worries.
I wasn't sitting yet, I'm sorry.
Name and address for the record, sorry.
Oh, yeah.
Sorry.
Cameron Mills, 9 Hartford Avenue.
Three minutes this time, just to be upfront.
Oh, no, it's not going to take long.
I didn't want you to cut you off, sorry.
Yeah, it's okay. If it wasn't for the adult, let's talk about transportation. You think they're going to go, yes, I know Felician Sisters has transportation. You want to send them to Windsor? Right now, my aunt uses the dial-a-ride. She spends a half an hour on the bus every day, going there, half an hour coming home. She didn't have Adult Daycare, she wouldn't get out of her house.
She talks to her dog, okay? She talks to her dog, and the reason that she went to have Adult Daycare is so she can have some socialization, okay? You took, and I want to say that the reason that you have nine to 13 people there is a direct reflection on your social services department. They are the ones that, why you lost all your people is because of your, I'm not going to say personalities, I'm not going to say people's names, but your former, two people that were in charge of your social services department, they are a direct result of why you've lost your people. You should be putting your money into expanding it, getting people from other towns to come to us because the services are not there, okay? They have, you've taken money away, away, away. You've had, you have talented people here who provide, love these people, love these clients that are there, love them, they provide so many services. I just, I just can't even believe that you would do this. If they didn't have this, they would have nothing. My aunt would, she would have frozen, she'd be frozen in her house. You want to talk about $500? That's nothing. I'm just so upset. I'm so upset at you people. It's just, this just blows my mind. You have no idea. You are one banana peel away from being there yourselves, needing to be there yourselves. You should all be ashamed of yourselves, and that's not a personal comment, that's the facts. I'm done.
May I say something?
Sure, right ahead. Name and address, ma'am.
My name is Ruth James. I live on 5 Parkey Drive. I'm in an interesting position where I am the center's nurse. I don't work for Caring Solutions. I am what's left of the nursing department. You see these tears? It's because I am 68. I'm this far from being a patient, and I'm still working there, and I love it. We give good care. We were dealt a really, really, really stinky blow for the last two years. We did not have any marketing, and yet this week we have two new clients, two, this week, last week, next week. We might have two more new clients, and two more clients after that. You've made your votes, we heard your votes. Thank you for listening to me, but this is, transcends the words that we heard from Mr. Sforza and Ms. Riley. This is our job, it's our profession, it's our career to give back to these people who are the people that we are all going to become, and very shortly. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak for the council? Mr. Young?
Is it on? George Young, appreciate your comments tonight about the Adult Daycare, and I believe there's probably about 600 people that are receiving these benefits from the town, so that's probably about $600,000 that the state is no longer funding half of. And I had mentioned this a while ago, we have state reps from our district and everything else. We should get them to get the state to reimburse the town for some of this money because that could be utilized to make up this deficit that you're talking about at the daycare. And if you are definitely closing the thing, anytime it's been a merger or an acquisition by one company or another, they always see that their employees perhaps can go to this new place. We're not only transitioning people, maybe we should be able to look at the Felician Sisters and ask them, "Are there places for these people here who are really close to the one-on-one situation of their clients?" And maybe there's a way to not only put dollars where your mouth is, but to put people to follow these people that are transitioning, and I think you should look into that. That's it, thank you.
Thank you for staying on. Anyone else like to speak for the council? Anyone else? Turning on, I declare public communications closed. Move on to Item 17, Council Communications. Any counselor? Deputy Mayor Suzak?
I wish everybody Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year.
Do I have a motion to adjourn? Counsel Mueller?
Second.
Counselor Mangini? All those in favor, by show of hands. Ten in favor, there are against. Good night, everyone. Happy New Year.